All right, I move we reconvene this meeting of the zoning board of appeals. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yes, and we're back. Calling calendar number one thirty-four dash twenty-three dash S. This is twenty-one thirty-seven West Walnut. If you're here in objection or support of this matter, please raise your hand and we will get you promoted. It's a star nine to raise your hand if you're on the phone. And star six to unmute. Right, Counselor Barton, it looks like you've got two witnesses.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Great.
Someone, we may have someone's raising their hand, let me see here.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, that would be good, and I'm happy to like, I can just add along. We will share adoption. In a month or two, and I mean, it would be great to just have your team's guidance at the very least.
I think it's Cameron, I think it's you, we're getting a lot of noise in the background. Okay, Nikisha Coleman, if you could unmute.
Good afternoon.
Hi, good afternoon, are you here in objection or support of this matter?
Um. I guess in objection to some degree.
Okay, 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 all right, let me, I'm gonna get everyone sworn in and then I'll, I'll let you know how, how this is gonna proceed. Uh, let's start with Cameron, Cameron, uh, can you state your name and address, please?
Yes, it's Cameron Compton, twenty-one thirty-seven West Walnut Street in Chicago, Illinois, six zero six one two.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Thank you, and Toby Sorenson, can you state your name and address, please?
Toby Sorenson, office at eighteen twenty-two Ridge Avenue in Evanston, Illinois, suite one twenty, six oh two oh one.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Uh, Nikisha, uh, can you state your name and address, please? You're muted right now.
Hello.
Yes, now we can hear you.
Oh, okay, Nikisha Coleman, uh, one thirteen oh two South Champlain Avenue, Chicago, six zero six two eight.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you. And there's also a, uh, Brenda, if you could unmute. You're muted right now, Brenda.
I'm here.
Uh, could you, are you here in support or objection of this matter?
Support.
Support, okay, could you, um, state your name and address, please?
Brenda Carr. Six forty-four North Lane, that's them.
Could you spell your last name, please?
S T A R R.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do.
Okay, and is there like a, in a unit number, an apartment number to your address?
It's a house.
It's a house, okay, uh, same question, um, for Ms. Coleman, is there a apartment or unit number to your address?
No, it's a house.
Okay, thank you. Um, okay, all right, so we've got everybody sworn in, now let me read. A statement about how this is gonna proceed. Okay. I want to remind everyone that this is not a town hall, this is a hearing, so we as the board are looking for evidence that either supports or does not support the applicant's case. Here is how the hearing is going to proceed. First, the applicant will put on their case and all of their witnesses. Then, we'll turn to supporters to put on their cases to why they're in support. Then, we'll turn to the objectors, and the objectors can put on their case as well as ask questions of the applicant's witnesses and supporters. After that, the applicant can ask questions of the objectors. Then, we'll return to the applicant for rebuttal testimony and closing remarks. After that, the board will take the matter under advisement. Throughout the hearing, board members will be asking questions of both the applicant and the objectors. All right, with that, uh, Counselor Barton, you can, uh, begin to put your case on in full. Oh, you know what, a recommendation here, let me, let me read that.
Okay.
This is the, uh, recommendation for calendar number one thirty-four dash twenty-three dash S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed rooftop patio to serve an existing brewery with taproom on the ground floor with a second floor expansion in addition to an existing one and two-story building, provided the special use is issued solely to the applicant. Maverick Ales and Lagers LLC, and the development is consistent with the design and layout of the previously approved landscape plan related to existing approved installed landscaping only, prepared by GMA Architects, approved November twenty-eight, twenty eighteen, and site and first floor plan dated April twenty twenty twenty-three, second floor plan dated January thirty twenty twenty-two, roof plan dated December thirteen twenty twenty-two, and exterior elevations, two sheets dated November four twenty twenty-two, all prepared by Arco Architecture. You may proceed, Counselor.
Okay. Thank you, uh, good afternoon. For the record, uh, my name is Timothy Barton, uh, with the firm, uh, of MSR Raines Attorney at Law LLC. I'm here today representing Maverick Ales and Lagers LLC, the applicant in matter of this, the special use being requested for the property at twenty-one thirty-seven West Walnut Street. As you see, uh, as you've sworn in both witnesses, I appreciate that, Mr. Chairman. Um. Uh, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. The subject property, as you see here, is improved with a one and two-story former factory building, uh, and which has an eleven-space parking area to the east, which would be to the left of the building in this photograph on the bottom. There are two building occupants, uh, there is a wedding and event hosting venue known as Walden in the western half of the building. And the applicant's Midwest Coast Brewing Company, Mike, microbrewery and taproom, uh, to the east. Midwest occupies eighteen thousand six hundred eighty-eight feet of the building, which is a little more than half. Uh, this business opened in twenty nineteen, and the applicant is now converting the second floor into additional taproom space and wants to add an outdoor rooftop on the second floor. Microbrewery is in subarea A of the Kinsey Plan Manufacturing District, PMD four, which allows rooftop patios, uh, with special use approval from the zoning board of appeals. As you noted, uh, the plan has been reviewed by the Department of Planning and Development, uh, CDOT, and forestry, and the changes have been made pursuant to the comments received from them. Um, I'd like to call, uh, Cam- uh, Cameron. Is. Cameron Compton, is he?
He's here. Yes, I'm here.
All right, Cameron, uh, just for the record, are you the manager of Ma- Maverick Lag- Lagers and Ales LLC? Which is the applicant.
Maverick Ales and Lagers LLC, yes.
Thank you, I stand corrected, uh, which is the owner of Midwest Brewing Company located at the subject site.
Yes.
Okay. And does Midwest Brewing Company currently operate a microbrewery and taproom on the first floor of the building at the site?
Yes, we do.
Okay. And was this company established in twenty nineteen and has it continued in operation since then?
Yes, we have.
Uh, when the work is, uh, when the proposed work is completed, will the brewery and taproom occupy eleven thousand one hundred and seventy-seven and the square feet and seven thousand five hundred eleven square feet respectively?
Yes.
Okay. That is, the production will occupy, um, eleven thousand one hundred and seventy-seven feet, and the taproom will occupy the balance.
Yes, that's correct.
Now, in the immediate area within, say, a six-black radius, um, are there five similar, uh, microbrewery and taprooms?
Yes, there are.
And tell me, on a day-to-day basis, are you generally onsite and actively involved in the company's operation?
Yes, sir, very much so.
Um, and are the taprooms hours on Thursday and Friday from two o'clock until ten o'clock? Saturday from noon until ten? Sunday, twelve to seven? And on Tuesday and Wednesday from two o'clock until nine o'clock?
Yes.
And the, uh, proposed rooftop deck will operate within those hours?
That's correct.
Uh, Cameron, I submitted an affidavit to the board as part of our findings, um, effect. If I were to go on and continue questioning you right now, would your answers be consistent with the statements in that affidavit?
Yep, they would.
Thank you. Um. Toby. If you're there.
Yes, I'm here.
Questions for you? Okay, thank you. Um, Toby, you're a certified MAI appraiser and member of the Appraisal Institute, correct?
Yes, I am.
Um, and did I ask you to inspect the subject property and the immediate area around it to, uh, as far as whether it would uh, meet the criteria for special use approval?
Yes, you did.
Okay, thank you. Um. Can you briefly describe, uh, the building and the area?
Yes, it's, it's, as you mentioned, a, a former industrial facility that's now occupied by, uh, two occupants, one of which is a private event hosting, um, venue, and the other is, um, uh, home to Midwest Coast Brewing Company, which has a brewery and taproom on site.
And are there similar buildings in the immediate area?
Yes, there are, both in terms of, um, uh, design and occupancy.
Um. This area is within PMD four, um, and, uh, are you familiar with the city of Chicago's framework plan, uh, with the mend that had that advised uh, amended zoning boundaries for the Kinsey PMD and, um, expanded uses?
Yes, I am, it, it essentially divided the, um, east and western portions of the PMD, um, at approximately Ashland Avenue. Um, that area lying east of Ashland being area A and the area west of Ashland being area B, and it permitted a wider array of commercial uses specifically within area A.
Um, is the proposed special use, uh, the rooftop, uh, patio consistent with the expanded range of uses identified in the Kinsey, in the framework plan?
Yes, it is, specifically, it now allows, um, uh, accessory outdoor patios if reviewed and approved in accordance with the special use procedures of the zoning ordinance.
Uh, based on your examination of the site and the surrounding area, do you have an opinion whether the site meets the criteria for special use approval?
Yes, I do, my opinion is that it does meet the, uh, five criteria for special uses as well as the two additional criteria for special uses within a PMD.
Um, I can go through each of those, um. Let me ask, does the special use uh, being proposed comply, comply with the zoning ordinance?
Yes, it does.
And would the special use, uh, of the rooftop patio be in the interest of public convenience?
It would.
And is there any, would there be any negative impact caused by the use?
No, there would be none.
Is the design compatible with the surrounding neighborhood?
It is, yes.
And will the business operations be compatible with the surrounding uses?
Yes, they will.
And will the special use promote pedestrian comfort and safety?
Yes, it will.
And with regards to the effects of the proposed use on the Kinsey PMD itself, uh, would it have a negative impact on the existing manufacturing activities in the area?
No, no negative impact.
And will the efforts to market other properties within the PMD for alternate uses be negatively impacted by the proposed special use?
No, uh, there would be no marketing impact for other properties.
And, um, how will you prepare a written report discussing your observations and conclusions, is that correct?
That's correct.
And I submitted your report to the board as part of the findings of fact for these, for this application. If I were to continue questioning you today, would your answers be consistent with that affidavit?
Yes, they would.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Chairman, this concludes our presentation.
Okay, thank you, any from, any questions from the board at this time? Okay, there's no questions from the board, um. Brenda Carr is, is back in the attendees, I've tried promoting her, but she's declining the promotion. Uh. Oh, now she's rejoining, there's also an and, uh, Am- Amariel Dixon, you have to accept the promotion.
I'm here.
Okay, all right, thank you, um, one second, and, and there's also an Amariel Dixon, uh, who has her hand raised, you need to accept the promotion.
Yes, I'm here as well, Mario Dixon.
Okay, are you here in objection or support?
Objection.
Objection, okay, um, let me get you, uh, sworn in, uh, it's not your turn yet, but I'll get you sworn in right now, um. Could you state your name and address, please?
Yes, my name is Mario Dixon, I reside at one forty-four nerve level, Chicago, Illinois, six zero six one two.
Is there a apartment or unit number?
No, sir.
Okay, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, there's, now we got some more. Uh, Shavanda Waddles?
Yes, I'm here, I'm in objection.
Are you here in objection or support?
Objection.
Okay, could you state your name and address, please?
Shavanda Waddles, twenty-three forty Clyde Terrace, Homewood, Illinois, six oh four three zero.
Apologies, I'm so sorry, Chairman, could she repeat that?
Yeah, can you repeat that, please?
Shavanda Waddles, twenty-three forty Clyde Terrace, Homewood, Illinois, six oh four three zero.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you.
Kevin, there are two more people, I'm trying to promote them, but they're not accepting.
They're declining the promotions, yeah.
I, I'll just allow them to talk as attending.
See here. All right, uh, Philip, are you here, uh, in supporter objection? You have to unmute, Philip.
Objection, thank you.
Okay, could you state your name and address, please?
Philip Davis. I reside at one thirty North Level, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six one two.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, China Walton, if you could unmute.
Good afternoon.
So how are you today?
I'm well, how are you?
I'm doing great, I kept playing on one bit.
Are you, uh, are you here in objection or support?
Objection.
Could you state your name and address, please?
Yes, my name is China Walton, I also reside at one thirty North Level, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six one two.
Could you say that again, you're cut out.
Sorry, my name is China Walton, I object, and I also reside at one thirty North Level, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six one two.
Is there a unit number?
No.
Okay. Um, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
A Sierra Rayner? If you could unmute?
Yes.
Are you here in?
Are you here in support?
Or objection?
Objections.
Objection.
Okay, are you off watching the livestream because we're getting some feedback?
What you mean?
Okay, it stopped, all right, okay, um, okay, uh, you're here in objection?
Yes.
Okay, could you state your name and address, please?
Sierra Rayner, one forty-two North Level.
Is there a unit or apartment number?
No.
Okay, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you. Tamiko Edwards, if you could, uh, unmute and, uh, tell us if you're in supporter objection?
Um, hi, I'm Tamiko Edwards, I am, um, objectionist.
Okay, could you state your name and address, please?
Um, Tamiko Edwards, eight two seven two Queen Avenue, North, Minne- Minneapolis, Minnesota, five five four four four.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you. Um. The, uh, the person who's, uh, J- Joseph, uh.
Joseph Charles.
Are you here in supporter objection?
Objection.
Okay, uh, could you state your name and address, please?
Joseph Charles, ninety-five forty-six South Charles, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six four three.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. Is there anyone who has recently joined that I have not yet, uh, called and sworn in? If so, raise your hand. Oh, we got another one. Promoting another person? Uh. Narisha Tate, if you want to, um, participate, you need to accept the promotion, you declined it. Okay, uh, Narisha Tate, if you could unmute?
Hello.
Hi, are you here in supporter objection?
Support.
Okay. Uh, could you state your name and address, please? Oh. Where did she go?
I'm sorry, my apologies, I'm here to object.
Oh, you're here to object, okay.
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm doing too much at one time.
Could you state your name and address, please?
Arisha Tate, three nine zero Tamarack Street, Park Forest, Illinois, six zero four six six.
All right. Do you, uh, swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you. Is there anyone else, uh, that I've not yet called? Who is here in supporter objection of this matter? Okay, uh, right now, we are in the, uh, the time that we are going to the supporters, uh, so we're going to go to, uh, Brenda Carr, who has been sworn in, uh, Brenda, if you could unmute and tell us.
Sorry, I am not in support. I know, I don't think you heard me, but I am not in support.
Oh, you're, you're in objection?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so there are no supporters. Uh, everyone is here in objection, um, and let's, let's just, then, we're gonna turn to the objectors now, uh, and we'll start with, um, with Brenda Carr. Um. Brenda, why don't you, uh, unmute and then tell us why you are here in objection? You're muted, Brenda, you have to unmute and tell us why you're in objection. Oh, maybe I'll ask a different question, is there someone that would like to take the lead for the objectors?
I'll take the lead.
Okay, uh, that's, um, who, was that, was that China?
Correct, China Walton.
Okay, uh, okay, I'll, I, I will have you take the lead, but, um, there's another person that's joining right now, let me, um, get this person sworn in, and then I'll, uh, pass it over to you.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, um, I believe, uh, Shanika was the one who just joined. If you can, um, unmute?
Hi, how are you?
I'm well, how are you?
I'm okay, how are you?
I'm good, could you, uh, tell us if you are here in supporter objection?
I'm objecting, sir.
Okay, and, um, could you state your name and address, please?
Shanika McDaniel. Nineteen ten South Seventh Avenue, Maywood, Illinois, six zero one five three.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Okay, uh, now we're going to go to, uh, China Walton. Um, if you could unmute China and tell us, uh, why you're here in objection.
Good help.
You're muted right now.
Am I still muted?
No, you're good now.
Um, I definitely think, I'm here to object due to a number of, some amount of reasons, one being that the loud music and within the community that we are in, I just don't think that it's gonna be a great fit, um. Hypothetically speaking, being that you know, you know, like, I would know that this, it could go wrong, it could go left, and you know, sometimes we just want to diffuse situations in a way that we may diffuse a situation could certainly be different from someone else diffusing a situation, and in order to keep the peace in our community, we would want, we wouldn't want that to happen at this time.
All right, I'm, I'm.
I'm sorry.
So you're, you're, you're you're objecting because you, um, you don't think it's going to be a good fit, is that what you're saying?
Correct. I don't.
Do you, I, and I don't remember, do you live near the the property?
Yes, I do.
Okay. And. And, um, and, and why is it that you don't believe it will be a good fit?
Loud music, one, being, the music sometimes could be too loud. I am a pre-law student and sometimes it's kind of, it, you know, it may be hard for me to study for my classes, for me to study for quizzes and things like that, I have children, and again, this is a rooftop bar. This is not something that we need in our community right now. Being that alcohol, what if someone decides to leave the, you know, the rooftop? Drunk, under the influence, my kids are outside playing from, they could be day drinking or anything, one second my love, okay? They smack, you know, they run it to my kids because they're playing, like, it's so, it's just so much that could go left, and I just would prefer it for the safety of my children and myself, like I said. I'm a pre-law student, I'm studying, I'm in the midst of taking, you know, my finals and everything like that, I'll be sitting for my LSAT exam soon. And I just want to be assured that? I have the piece that I need to study. For my exams and everything like that for school just in general, and again, for the safety of my children.
Have you had any, um, because the, the, uh, the brewery is, is, is there already, correct?
I'm sorry, but you're going in and out.
The, the, the brewery already exists in the space, correct, Ms. Walton?
Correct.
And have you had any, uh, issues with the brewery, uh, to date?
Not whatsoever.
Okay. Okay, uh, let's go, uh, did you have anything else to say, Ms. Walton?
No, that'll be all.
Okay, thank you.
My pleasure.
Uh, let's go to Shanika McDaniel, who has, uh, her hand raised. Would you like to, uh, tell us why you're here in objection?
Yes, I'm objecting because I believe that we have enough things that's going on in that area already far as with alcohol. And I believe that they could do something else with that space to do something for the children. Um, we can do some other things far as a meeting space for other things instead of a rooftop bar, that's what I feel.
And, uh, do you live in the neighborhood?
Um, yes, I frequently come through the neighborhood because my sister stays over there.
Hold on, that's not my question, my question is, do you live in the neighborhood?
No, I don't.
Alright, because I had you as, you lived in Maywood?
I do.
Okay, and, um, and, and, but, explain, so, so why? I guess explain to me why, uh, you're opposed to this, uh, when you, when you don't live near it.
Right, I don't live near it, but I'm in the area a lot because I have family in that area. And I understand that it's other things that they could be putting in that community to do other things for other reasons instead of adding another bar. It's enough, it's enough things over there with rooftop parties and everything else that's going on in that area already. So why would use the area for something else?
Is your family, uh, on this, uh, uh, in this hearing right now? The ones that live?
I believe three of them are, I believe so.
And which ones are those?
Hold on, let me go in here. Sierra Rayner, Philip. Amariel Dixon. Um. Hold on, go down. So those are the three that I can see right offhand.
Okay. Okay. Did you have anything else, uh, to, uh, to add?
No.
Okay. Alright, um, I, I can see Philip has his hand raised, uh, Philip, uh, why don't you tell us why you're, uh, in objection?
Can you hear?
Yes.
Uh, basically, I'm just? I just say like, it's too much going on with alcohol in the community. Uh, yes, I have kids that sing to play in the back and I wanna try to keep them ca-don so they don't get hit by any drunk driver or anything like that. And, yeah, I mean, the music is a little loud, but? I mean, it's able to work, you're able to work through it, but I don't want anything to happen as far as like drug DUIs type things like that.
Okay.
Um, okay, uh? For, uh, for? For, question for Philip, um? So, you're saying the music is loud? Are you saying that, that, that you're already hearing loud music coming from? This brewery?
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm saying, like, uh?
And, uh, and, and, and it, what, in what times of, uh, of the day or night are you hearing loud music coming from the brewery?
It comes that, it's like it's in the mornings, in the afternoonish. You know, like, whatever kind of bars open up, they, they open at like twelve, oneish. Maybe a little early, but it'd be loud music, uh, it's a lot of drunk drivers, you know?
Uh, there's no, um? There's no rooftop? Bar?
No, I'm, I, I know it's not there yet, I'm saying, it's, it'd be loud music in the morning and afternoon still, though.
But you're saying, yeah, so, so that was, that's my question, so as it exists right now, as the brewery exists right now, you're saying you hear loud music in the morning and in the early afternoon?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, have you had, um, other than the, the loud music, have you had any other? Uh, issues with, uh, the brewery, any run-ins with, with people from the brewery or anything like that?
No, but a rooftop part, I mean, but a rooftop bar, like, that would make it even worse, don't you think?
I, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to ask questions and, uh, and, and, and figure out what, uh, what personal knowledge you have.
Yes, no, I was just, I was just asking for your opinion too, but I knew what I was saying.
Okay, okay.
Um, actually, I'm so sorry to be.
Uh, ho- hold up, hold up, I'm, hold up, uh, Philip, uh, do you, is there anything else that you have to add, Philip?
No, that's alright.
Okay, alright, alright, thank you. Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm, Amariel Dixon, oh, she had her hand raised, but now it's down.
Yes, I'm here.
Oh, there we go. Uh, so do you have, uh, anything that you would like to, uh, add, uh, to what's been said?
Yes, um, good afternoon, I would like to object because, um, as previous? People states that, um, I don't think a rooftop would be a good idea. Because I'm saying like, when it comes, like, it's gonna be loud noise, and I have two young children who have to get up in the morning for school, I also have to get up in the morning for work, and I just don't think it's a good idea. There's already enough, you know, going on within the area, like, um, sometimes it'd be accidents, you hear gunshots, and we would just like to, you know, keep the commotion down, I think we should do? Something other than a rooftop, the bureau is always, already there, like, should we do something like? Build a park for the kids in the area, like a library or something, I don't think that we should add more to the bar that's already there, if that makes sense.
And, and have you, uh, had any issues presently with, with the brewery as it exists now, have you had any run-ins with them?
No, I have not, but I have seen, you know, like? It'd be fights, it'd be loud ruckus, it'd be drunk people, I'm sorry to offend anybody. But yes, it'd be like drunk people, it'd be a loud ruckus, and it's just disturbing. Like, there's already, already a lot going on in the world, and I'm just, like, trying to keep the commotion down as far as possible.
Hey, um? Okay, I can see, uh, did, did you have anything else to add, uh, Ms. Dixon?
I'm not sorry, that's it, is there any more questions you want to ask me?
Not at this time, thank you.
Alright, thank you so much.
Uh, let's, let's go to, uh, Shav- Shavanda, uh, Waddles, who has her hand raised.
Yes.
Do you have, uh, anything to add?
So, in objection to, to this? And listening to what the supporter or what the young man was sharing, the commu- the brewery is not supporting the community. So that's really the biggest issue, we understand they're trying to do a rooftop, but how is that gonna support the community, and I don't hear anything from them stating that they're gonna support the community in any way.
Now, uh, um, let me ask you a question, because I, you're, you live in Homewood, is that correct?
Yes, I reside in Homewood, but I'm in that area a lot due to my my career and the things that I'm doing in that community, so I, I see what's going on, I see the different things that transpire. And I just don't, I haven't heard anything about what this brewery will be doing to better the community at all.
Okay. Uh, do you have anything else, uh, that you'd like to say?
No.
Okay, alright, thank you. Is there, uh? Anyone else, uh, any, any other objector, uh, that would like to speak, I think we haven't heard yet, um? From, uh? Sierra Rayner, Tamiko Edwards. Um, or, you know, if, 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 if everyone else has already stated what you were going to say, then that's fine, you can just say that, you know? Um, you know, everybody's said my objection already, we don't need redundancy, but I see Sierra Rayner's got her hand now, uh, raised now. Uh, Sierra, uh, do you have anything to add that's new?
Um, I just don't feel like it's a good idea for the community, like, people have children. At late, at night, it's a lot of traffic going on, if they have a big party, it's just, it's just too much.
And have you found that there's, uh, a, a lot of traffic generated from, uh, the brewery as it exists now?
No, it's just car accidents going on when people drunk, things of that nature. And like, how is it gonna benefit the community?
Uh, when you say car accidents with people drunk, do you? Do you have any personal knowledge about any car accidents of drunk drivers coming from the brewery?
No.
Okay. Do you have anything else to add?
No. How is it gonna benefit the community?
That is the, that's the, you would like that question answered, uh, by the applicant, is that, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, well, let's, let's, um, the, we've, we have got a question from the objectors, and the question is, how is? The, uh, the brewery gonna benefit the, the community, and I think, you know, what we're really talking about, because I wanted to keep it related to our? Um, to our, uh, standards here, so, you know? Is there gonna be an adverse impact, is it gonna fit within the character of the neighborhood, I need somebody to talk about that, uh, on the applicant's side.
Yes, sir, I'm sorry to cut you out, but I also have a question as well.
Okay, well, hold on, hold, hold, hold that question, because let's answer this one, and then we'll go to your question next, okay?
Alright, great, thank you.
Yes. Okay, someone from the applicant.
Uh, yes, I can answer that question, um, we work very closely with, uh, Breakthrough Neighborhood in East Garfield Park. Uh, we do numerous events with them, toy drives, winter clothing drives, um, all sorts of events, we hosted, uh, an event specifically for them, we closed down the taproom entirely for Breakthrough. Uh, within the last, I wanna say six weeks, I can't tell you exactly when it was off the top of my head. Um, but as far as doing things for the community, we work very closely with Breakthrough in Garfield Park, so, there's been a lot of things done, uh, in that regard.
And, um, what about this, uh, th- there was a, a question about loud noise, uh, in the morning and in the afternoon? Coming from the brewery, do you, is there any, have you received complaints about loud music coming from brewery?
Uh, we've never received a single complaint about loud noise, um, don't have? Uh, yeah, we are, we're a brewery, we're not a late night spot, we're not open, breweries are not late night spots, we're not open until after, you know, ten or eleven, eleven on the weekends, um, our bar is pretty emptied out, I would say during the week. Around eight or nine PM, uh, we close at nine during the week, and I would say we're pretty empty on the weekends, starting at around nine thirty, ten o'clock, um, it's just not a late night spot, and we don't have outdoor speakers or anything like that, any noise that currently exists is ambient within the taproom itself, we have never received a single complaint from anyone in the neighborhood or outside, for that matter, um, regarding, regarding noise.
And you've never been, I'm guessing you've never been cited for any, you know, decibel level violations or anything like that?
Not once.
Okay. Alright, let's go to, uh, uh, Amariel Dixon, who had a question, uh, go ahead and, and you can ask your question.
Um, yes, um, I'm gonna go back to what he said, he said that, um, he would work with Garfield Park, um, with Breakthrough. Uh, that's Garfield, we talking about within our community, like, what positive outcomes are gonna come from? The rooftop within our community, we not talking about Garfield, we talking about Levitt, um, around Lake area, like, what's going on that? What's going on around that that's positive, like, what benefits are we gonna have in our community from you guys building a rooftop bar?
Okay, so the, 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 the question is? Well, let me ask, let me ask a follow-up question to Ms. Dixon, um? What, uh? What, what, what do you, when, when you say benefits, what do you mean?
Yes, I'm asking like, what is our community gonna gain from the rooftop bars, see, we, there's a lot of kids in the area. And as I was stating before, there's nothing in the area that's gonna benefit the kids, so, the bar is already there. That is not enough, like, why do you have to add a rooftop, if that makes sense?
Well, I, I, I think he's, you know, essentially testified how, you know, well, why don't you? What, what, tell us what the purpose is of, of building the rooftop? You know, and just, and why you decided to do it.
Um? The purpose of building the, the rooftop would be? I mean? First and foremost, one of our biggest things we get requests for is? The purpose for building the rooftop is that we have a great view of the skyline, we want to increase our business, and we want to create a, a destination in the neighborhood for people to come to. That's the purpose of building a rooftop.
Okay. Alright, um? Is there any other, uh, objector that, uh, would like to speak? Let's see, Nikisha Coleman just came back, Nikisha, have you spoken yet? Did you, did you need, have anything to add?
I haven't spoken. Um, but I just wanted to piggyback on some of the things they said about, or everyone else has said about the noise in the community and also supporting the immediate community, and I also, also to the owner's point that they wanna build the, uh, the roof portion so that they can add that element to their business. So I guess in doing that, some of the things that were brought up were the noise complaints, or being outside, or additional drunk people during hours that they haven't normally been there at the brewery. And that outside element would actually bring more of the noise issues that were brought up during the call, I would be thinking. And although supporting Breakthrough is a really great thing, there are plenty of schools and other organizations that are in that immediate area that could also use some support from businesses in the local community.
Okay, thank you, did you?
If that makes sense.
Yeah, I, 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 I understand what you're saying, um? Is there, uh, is, did you, did you have anything else to add, or is that, or have you, are you finished?
Um, I would just, I'm not sure of the timing of this, or? If it is a good fit necessarily right now.
Okay, thank you. Um? Alright, alright, uh, is, is there anyone, I can see, uh, China Walton's got, uh, her hand raised, um, but before I because I've already spoken with, uh, China, is there anyone else that has anything to add? Okay, I'm not seeing anyone else raise their hand. Okay, let's go to China. China, um? You can unmute? Do you have a question, uh, or? Whoa? Or something to add that's new? You're muted right now.
Yes, I'm sorry, no, I'm here, um? My biggest concern is, again, my children, I am a part of the LGBT community, and that would, that's kinda, that'd be, you know, just a little more dangerous than it already is, in the area. So my biggest, my biggest concern as well is? What, you know, again, what could we? Just the Levitt, the Lake area, what could we potentially gain? As far as like resources or the up and coming of our community from a rooftop bar, like I said? I'm a pre-law student, loud music, of course, there's day parties, there's day drinking.
Walton, I, I just, I, because we've, we've heard.
Yeah, because, no, he never answered the question from the start, so, before you cut me out. What exactly, I'm, uh, if I'm not mistaken, Ms. Dixon, I believe, she's on the call, she asked the question and he never really had a response. So I want to reiterate the question to see if there's gonna be a response maybe, or? A neighborhood email that'll come out with her answer for that particular question, because that question wasn't her answer. The question was for Mr. Compton, um, what exactly, again, not in regards to Garfield Park, but we do have- But we do have members of the LGBT community that is in that area. What exactly are they or our children? Our families in general gonna gain from a loud rooftop bar during the day?
Uh, uh, he's answered the question to why he's, oh, why he's, oh, why he wants to open the rooftop? So that's asked and answered. Uh.
Okay.
You, you may have not liked his answer, but that is, but he's answered the question. Um, so, you know, it's asked and answered. Uh, alright, eh, so is there anything um? Anything further from the objectors?
Um, yes, and I could also touch basis back on that. Um, I believe Phil, Philip was saying that um, he heard noise during the afternoon. I'm sorry about the background. Um, Phil was stating that he had heard noise during the afternoon.
And, we've been, we've been over the noise. We've, we've.
Correct, but we wasn't talking about at nighttime, because I believe he had mentioned something about during the night. We wasn't talking about during the night. We was talking about during the day.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, just making sure.
Yeah, he said, yeah, he did say uh, i- in the, in the daytime. Um, Sierra, do you have anything new to add? I don't wanna get uh, you know, no, no redundancy. We've heard a lot now. You have to unmute, Sierra.
Yeah, like he answered, he, he answered the question, but he didn't answer the question. He talked about Garfield community. He didn't speak on our community.
Well, he talked about.
He just explained, he just explained why he wants to open, and his idea of it. Once again, he didn't speak on what it was gonna do for our community. Because like I said, we already have a lot of bars and things over there. And it's a lot of traffic going on at nighttime, when people are trying to sleep and people have kids and have to go to work and get up early in the morning.
Well, let's, let me, let, let me ask. Let me ask Mr. Compton. Mr. Compton, uh, uh, do, do you think your, your business is providing a, a benefit to the area where you operate?
We absolutely are. I think there's been some extreme confusion. We are. We are known throughout. The entire area as one of the most family-friendly businesses in the area. We. People walk their kids and their dogs to our brewery on a daily basis. Uh, we're dog-friendly. We are super kid-friendly. We are. Providing a place where anyone can come and enjoy themselves. We pride ourselves on making a pretty good product and providing a very good place for people to come and enjoy themselves and. I, I think. There's some confusion here. We are, we are incredibly family-friendly and that is actually one of our reputations throughout the entire city and the brewing industry and the neighborhood.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Uh, Chairman, this is Commissioner Toy. I just wanna jump in with a few things here. First off, I wanna clarify, because I obviously know this area very well. You cannot have. You cannot have um. Outdoor music on a, a rooftop deck. You cannot have speakers on there. By law, you know what I mean? So, there's no noise from music. So I wanna make sure. Everybody. People opposing, my colleagues, everyone understand that, okay? You cannot have outdoor speakers on a rooftop, number one. Number two, cuz there seems to be a lot of um. You know, misinformation. Mr. Compton, I'm asking you this. Do you think maybe you go back and have a community meeting and try to communicate and try to figure this out? Or do we wanna keep moving ahead here? Because I always believe communication is the key to success.
I agree.
There's a breakdown in communication, in my opinion.
Uh, if, if that's what's necessary, then, then yes.
Was there any community outreach uh, be- before, coming before us?
No.
Well, hold on.
If I may.
This is a question for the applicant. Yeah, counselor, what was the outreach for the community before you, you came before us?
Well, um. Obviously, we did the notice mailing, um. And. He. Cameron, you should verify this, but. My understanding was that you reached out to the immediate neighbors. Which are all principally manufacturing-related. Um. There was no public meeting. Um, we have been in touch with the alderman's office. We, you know, like I say, we just wanted to. Talk with the immediate neighbors who we thought would be um, most affected.
Uh, yes, that's correct. All of our immediate neighbors we've talked to are in full support.
And what about the, when you had the conversation, did you speak with the alderman? What was the alderman's position?
I did not speak. Go ahead.
No, ten year, uh, that was.
Okay. Um, I did not speak with the alderman. I know my colleague Tom Rains did. Um, and I believe. That um. The Alderman's Chief of Staff. Let um. Let the staff know that the alderman is in favor of it. Of the rooftop addition. Rooftop patio.
Okay, but that's, that's hearsay. You, you, that's Tom Rains saying that he spoke to the alderman and telling you that?
Right, but this is Commissioner Toy again, but this is the twenty-seventh ward, so obviously this is Wal- Walter, Alderman Walter Barnett, right? So. He has a lot of uh, hospitality in his ward, so I gotta imagine. Just dealing with him over the last twelve years on, on the board here, uh, that he knew about this. You know, he, he's an alderman that. He is the longest-serving alderman now, right now too, in the city council since the lot of retirement. So I don't think Alderman Barnett misses too much.
Right.
And that, that's what his record shows.
Sure, sure. Uh, okay, um. Ms. Coleman has her uh, her hand uh, raised. Uh, do you have anything uh, new to add, Ms. Coleman?
Oh, I wanted to say thank you to Commissioner Toy for bringing up a great question, because that was gonna be my next question. Was there some community outreach? And or um, conversation to ensure that everyone was on board? And I, I too know Alderman Barnett, so I know that he doesn't miss anything, but. In positions like that, sometimes you don't always get the grassroots information. Um, if it wasn't actually provided or, or taken properly. So I, I think it would maybe helpful for everyone to have maybe another sit-down or. Some outreach to ensure that everyone was on board. That would be, that was, I thought that was a great question from the commissioner, and that's what I was gonna ask as well.
Okay.
That's awesome.
I appreciate that. As I always say, this is the uh, people's board, so I always like the communication going on. But I would leave that up to. Mr. Compton, if he wanted to go that route, do a continuance, do a community meeting and then come back. But. What, it's up to Mr. Compton and then the chairman, what they think.
Yeah, I mean, there's, so there's been, you know, you're hearing from the community right now that they would like a meeting. They wanna discuss this and it's, I think Commissioner Toy has rightly posed the question of, do you want a continuance so that you can have a further dialogue? With uh, the community about um, the plans you have for your uh, for your rooftop?
Uh, is that a question for me? Yes, um.
I. I mean, basically, the, you know, wh- where we're at right now is, you know, we can, we can go forward and we can vote on it, you know, as it is right now. Or uh, we can continue it, give you some time to meet uh, with the community uh, to, you know. Explain what your, you know, plan is and, and, and see if you can address the concerns that are, that are being raised.
Um, so I will probably leave that to our council to determine that, but I would also just like to point out that um. The PMD four A is not a residential neighborhood and there are no residences in our zone.
Did, Mr. Chairman, I did wanna point that out as well to. You know, this uh.
We all.
Our site is within. Sorry. Our site. Is. Um. Probably more than a block. Away. It's past the uh, the Lake Street Green Line tracks. Uh, from the objectors as far as I can tell by the addresses that were given. Um. As, as far as um. A continuance. Would um, we pass on this a moment? Uh, and discuss it?
You wanna discuss it? Okay, alright, uh.
Excuse me, this is Commissioner, excuse me, this is Commissioner Esposito. Would you, would you mind just repeating the hours of operation once more?
Uh, yes, sir, happily. Our, our hours of operation are uh, Tuesday and Wednesday. We operate from two P M to nine P M. On Thursday and Friday, we operate from two P M to ten P M. On Saturday, we operate from twelve P M to, or sorry, Thursday and Friday are two P M to. Yes, sorry, ten P M. Our Saturday hours are noon to uh, ten P M and our Sunday hours are noon until seven P M.
Thank you. So, when somebody says they're hearing loud music in the morning, do you have a response for that?
I, I don't. I'm, I'm unclear where the music would be coming from. Uh, we typically. Do not have any of our doors open. We have no doors that open facing south. Period, um, towards the, towards the areas. From which people are objecting.
Great, okay, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, so uh, Counselor Barton, you, you, you want me to pass this so that you can confer with your client?
I think that, that would be best.
Okay, here's what we're gonna do, and this is for everybody, uh, on, on, the, the objectors and everyone, you know. Don't uh, don't leave uh, because we are going to, we're gonna pass this, we're gonna take the next case and then we're gonna come back.
Okay.
This case, and we're, we're gonna recall it and we're either gonna go forward or we're going to um. Uh, or we're gonna, if they wanna continuance, we'll, we'll discuss the request for a continuance. Um, but for all the objectors that have got on the call, do not leave. Um, because we are gonna recall this case um, after, after we hear uh, one case. Okay, so we're gonna pass it for now. And they're gonna.
And, and one other thing I wanna put in, uh, uh, Chairman, if we do, if they do wanna do a community meeting, which I always think communication is the key to success. I would hope that we could get them on for next month, because obviously we don't wanna hold up Mr. Compton if, you know, with his business. So. I, I don't know if you could squeeze that in or not, but I wanna put that on the table with your blessing or not.
Yeah, we'll uh, we'll, we'll see what the um.
Well, you might wanna make, if we can, so he knows when they're communicating, because if I.
We'll find that out, we'll find that out, if we can continue it to, to May or not, if the.
Because, you know, it could, you know, turn out costly for Mr. Compton if we pull it out too.
The, the answer to, the, actually, the answer to that question I'm hearing is, is, is we cannot. It would have to be June. So it would have to be June if it was continued.
But I just wanna make sure Mr. Compton and his legal team have that when they make the decision, you know, so.
Yeah, so uh, so you have the knowledge, uh, Counselor Barton, that if uh, you request a continuance, it would have to be until June. Uh, so uh, you can confer, we'll pass this case, we're gonna take the next case, we'll go through it and then we'll come back to this case. Again, for all the objectors. Please stay on, uh, because we are gonna recall this case um, shortly.
Chairman, this is Kamal Texwood. Uh, can I move them to attendees?
Yes, you can, we'll, we'll move you to attendees, but just don't get off the uh, the Zoom call. Uh, uh. Stay on, because we're gonna recall it. Okay. Next up. Is calendar number one thirty-five dash twenty-three dash Z. This is fifty sixty-nine to seventy-five North Northwest Highway. If you're hearing objection or support of this matter. Please uh, raise your hand and we will get you promoted. Uh, if you are on the phone, it's star nine to raise your hand.
This is Alderman Jim Gardner.
Oh, hey, uh, good afternoon, Alderman. How are you?
I'm wonderful. How about you?
I'm well, I'm well.
Uh, good.
Excellent, uh.
I just, go ahead.
Yeah, let me um, let me just uh, let me get you sworn in. Um, as we get everybody promoted here, but could you just uh, state your name and role, please?
Uh, this is James Gardner. I'm Alderman of the forty-fifth ward.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. Okay, well, uh, what brings you here today, Alderman?
Um, I am here to show our community's support. Of um. Of the applicant here, uh, at fifty sixty-nine North Northwest Highway. Um, application for a variation to reduce the front setback from fifteen feet to seven and a half. Rear setback from thirty feet to eighteen point seven five for a proposed three-story fourteen-dwelling unit building with onsite parking. Um. We would uh, we would greatly appreciate your favorable consideration today.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate you uh, stopping by.
Thank you, sir.
Alright. Alright, uh, we've got Counselor Colpak on. Uh, Counselor, you've got uh? How many witnesses here?
Two.
Two? Okay.
The applicant and our architect.
Alright, uh. Let's see here, do we have them? Yeah, we've got them. Uh, if we could uh, start with the uh, the, oh, do we have someone in opposition? Let me see here.
Uh, yes.
Oh, who, uh, who's, who, who's speaking?
Uh, fifty fifty-nine North, or, North, Northwest Highway. Last name Stanis, first name Mathias.
Okay, you're, uh, are you hearing objection?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Alright, I will get you uh, sworn in, um. Along with the uh. Applicant, yeah, well, let's just start with you. If you could uh, state your name and address, please.
Uh, Mathias Stanis. Fifty fifty-nine North Northwest Highway, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six three zero.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you. And then uh, if the applicant uh, could uh, state uh, your name and address?
My name is Dorel Ardilian. That's spelled D O R E L. Last name is Ardilian, A R D E L E A N. Six six five four, North Leroy, Lincoln, Illinois, six oh seven one two.
You swear or affirm uh, to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you. And uh, do we have the uh, the architect? If you could uh, state your name and address?
My name is Laslo Simovic, sixty-five twelve North Artesian, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six four five.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you. Alright, uh, just to, let me do a shortened version of my statement here. So, you know. Again, this is not a town hall. It's a hearing, so we as the board are looking for evidence that either supports or does not support the applicant's case. So this is how we're gonna proceed. The applicant is gonna put on their case first. Uh, then we're gonna turn to the objectors to state why uh, they're in objection. The objector can ask questions of the applicant. Uh, and then once uh, once the objector's done, we're gonna go back to the applicant for uh, rebuttal and closing, and the board can ask questions throughout. Um, so with that being said. Uh. Counselor uh, Colpak, uh, please uh, put on your case.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Paul Colpak. Office is sixty-seven sixty-seven North Milwaukee Avenue. I represent the applicant. The uh, fifty sixty-nine Northwest Highway LLC. Uh, we're here today requesting two variations, which I would ask that we consolidate for the purposes of this hearing. First variation is to reduce the front setback from fifteen feet to seven and a half. Uh. Feet from the rear setback from thirty to eighteen point seventy-five feet. For the proposed three-story fourteen-dwelling unit building with fourteen parking spaces. The second one is an application for a variation to reduce the rear yard open space. From the required seven hundred and sixty-three point seven two feet, to that of four hundred and seventy-seven feet. Again, for the purpose of a three-story fourteen-unit building with fourteen parking spaces. Property in question is an irregularly shaped lot on the corner of Carmen and Northwest Highway. Uh, the lot is uh, approximately eleven thousand seven hundred and forty-nine feet. It is regularly shaped because of the configuration of Carmen meeting up with. Uh, Northwest Highway. No other lots on Northwest Highway. Uh. I have an adverse configuration. They're all standard lots on that block area. We um. Under the current zoning, which is four point five, this property. We, um, under the current zoning, which is four point five, this property would be able to, uh, be allowed to build sixteen dwelling units. However, based on the configuration, we brought it down from, from the sixteen, that's a lot under the R four point five, to that of fourteen. And even then, we had the, the issues with the setbacks, and therefore the request for the variations. We did have a community meeting on January fourth with the Jefferson Park, uh, Association. Um, we had a very good discussion on that, uh, it sorry, at that time, and we did receive the letter of support. Uh, there was a condition on the letter of support, and that condition was if this board would agree to the two variations, that we would construct the building in substantial conformity with the plans that are presented to you, um, today, which my client has agreed to. Lazlo? Are you available? Yes, I just turned on my microphone. Yes, I'm here. Lazlo, uh, you retain, you're the architect of this project, is that correct? That's correct. And Lazlo, could you please explain to the board the difficulties that you have in configuring this building, and the, uh, reason for the requested variations? Well, in terms of laying out the project here, the, the site did cause a lot of, uh, uh, concern, especially with the, uh, the, the street going at an angle. It, we couldn't get, have an orthogonal site, so like the conventional uh, city lots to, uh, design the buildings, so we had to shoehorn this in, and it caused a lot of concern, and we also tried to, uh, max, to max out our floor area due to the constraint of the site. That was a, that was the primary concern. And when, when we looked at this, we originally looked, this, this project has been going on for almost a year. Uh, we originally looked at sixteen dwelling units, which was certainly not feasible, and this is the plan that was in, in our client's best interest, and the one that the community association agreed upon. Is that correct? That is correct. I have no further questions for, uh, my architect.
Okay.
Dorel?
Yes.
Well, please state your name.
Dorel Ardilian.
Dorel, not only did we meet with the community group, but you also met with Rafael Alaya, Ayaya, who is the property owner immediately adjacent to you, but I'm gonna call to the southeast, is that correct?
I did communicate with Mr. Rafael, yes.
And he, when you had this communication with him, he was in full support, is that correct?
Full support.
And you have done other developments in the area, is that correct?
I did a lot, and I, I don't live far from there, and I did a lot of project in the city of Chicago.
And you manage your own properties, is that correct?
Yes.
And this is gonna be a rental unit?
Yes.
And again, it's hard to predict based on the availability, materials, and inflation, et cetera, but based on the economic, uh, impact that we disclosed, you're looking to perhaps make a nine percent return on your investment, is that correct?
That's how I would estimate.
And without that, we would have to go back to the drawing board without these variations, and there may not be, it certainly would not be a significant financial benefit to you to continue any project here, is that correct?
It's correct. We already reducing the units.
And we're approximately nine hundred feet from the, um, train station, and we're approximately fourteen hundred feet from the Jefferson Park L, is that correct?
Yes.
And when we had this meeting with the association, their concern was uh, because there's an R three behind the alley to us, their concern was parking, and we indicated to them that we did bring in, as Lazlo mentioned, the one-to-one parking, uh, to comply with the city ordinance, is that correct?
Yes.
I have no further questions from, um, from the applicant.
Okay, and so that's your case?
Yes.
Are there any, uh, questions from the board before we, uh, go over to the objector? All right, uh, let's turn to, uh, Marius Stanish. If you could unmute and, uh, tell us why you're in objection of this, uh, project.
Uh, sure. Um, I just wanted to let you guys know, it's kind of news to, uh, some of us that this was part of a town meeting. Um, because the, when we, uh, sent out the, when we received this, uh, notice, we went around the block and collected signatures, and no one was aware. So this was less than two weeks of a notice for us to knowing this. That was, that was the first thing. Uh, and we did connect, uh, collect over twenty some signatures for around the block for objection. Uh, we did submit that uh, was it Monday? A Monday? Uh, so it is kind of news for us. Uh, one, it was, uh, you know, regardless of it, I will tell you guys the issues we're having with. As we live uh, right next to, uh, Ralph would have been, uh, the property owner of fifty, uh, sixty-one, we're right next to him. Um, a major, uh, the major issue is the visibility, what will happen when this building gets erected from either coming out of the alley, which is already a big issue, okay? Uh, it's hard to tell who's coming down Carmen, uh, Street going, I believe there'll be westbound. That's not the issue there. Eastbound is the, the bigger problem, because when people take north, uh, take, uh, they're going off of Milwaukee, they'll take that turn. And they're, they're going pretty quickly because they're going off of Milwaukee, which is right out to Carmen Street. Which, if you try to take, if you try to pull out of the alley without visibility, you got a good chance of, um, getting hit. Another big problem is having this, because it looks like the setback to Carmen Street is all the way up to the, at least what I'm seeing on the original picture. Uh, you guys brought up, is the setback all the way up to the sidewalk, pretty much? That almost guarantees anybody taking a right out of Northwest Highway has to go at least at least past the, the crosswalk to be able to see any visibility what's coming down Carmen, going westbound. That's a big issue. And not only, not only then you're exposed to getting hit from somebody taking a right on Milwaukee onto either Northwest, well, actually mostly Carmen, or the left onto Carmen from Milwaukee. And, and, and honestly, if you guys go back and, uh, Chris Gardner knows this, there was an issue last time with the previous owner, but they wanted to build a lot more units, right? Um, same, same issues came up. One is, one is the location of the park, it looks like the park is gonna be towards the back, if I'm looking at this correctly, because by the way, this is the first time we're looking at it. I have called the office that was on the, um, on the, uh, on the notice, at least three times requesting for a callback. Okay, with some additional information. Zero. Okay. So, you know, it, it is a big issue. There is a lot of people that use Carmen and Northwest Highway through cuts, because the high, first of all, with the construction now going on, it's became again a big highway, you know, cutting from the highways going through Carmen Street, going on to Milwaukee as shortcuts. Not, not to mention when Metro starts back off, that traffic's gonna increase again. So again, it is almost impossible in the mornings or in the afternoons when the traffic comes out to pull out of Northwest Highway, onto Milwaukee. Okay, it is very difficult. I, I, I ask any, anybody, I actually did request of Gartner's, um, uh, somebody in the office last time just came up with the other owner to come and take a look at it, how it actually is. And as far as I remember, they came in agreement. It is a very difficult term. You're, you're not only endangering us here, because we, you know, we live here, but anybody who uses these cut trees, anybody who's dropping off their kids at Bobian. It's, it is a safety thing. If you have the offset all the way up there, it is completely a blind corner. And it would be really easy to prove this if these plans were available earlier. Um, you know, or if the, if the builder provided, um, a three D mock-up use, uh, like on Google, on Google Earth, you could completely see how it would look in real, how it would affect traffic really well. It's, it's, it's nothing to do with, you know, for me, for business, because this is family owned. Yeah, and it really is a high-traffic area. Look, if you guys look back at records of accidents, how many accidents in the last ten years happened in that particular intersection? Carmen, Northwest Highway, and Milwaukee, you guys will be surprised. Yes, it is a little bit lower traffic now, because the lot for Metro is being worked on, and the whole station is being worked on, so there isn't as many people parking there. But it still is very busy. And once that gets finished, it's gonna be more, it's gonna be busier. So, yeah, I mean, tell me how their plan solves, solves, solves any safety issues with car driving. I, I, I can provide you guys video evidence of a car, car, car dash cam, if you guys want of driving through that. Yeah, it, it's pretty much makes it impossible to see. You're cutting off the view for anybody on, uh, uh, coming on Carmen.
All right, so, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, and it is honestly, same thing, turning left from Carmen to Northwest Highway is gonna be kind of dangerous, cuz you're not gonna see the traffic coming from Northwest Highway.
All right, so I'm hearing a question that, and that question is essentially, you know, the, the, the safety issue with regard to the traffic, you want to, you want, you want them to explain why they think that this would actually be safe?
Not only that, have they even looked at that? Have they actually did a study or anything? So they say, hey, this building is not going to impede anybody taking a right or left. Well, yeah, taking a right onto Carmen, same thing. You going, going northbound on Northwest Highway and taking a right onto Carmen, which is more than ninety-degree turn, you gotta creep out quite a bit. I, 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 one of the things we did submit, when the sign was, uh, it's still there, posted there, you can see just the sign itself, sitting in that section blocks most of your view of what's gonna be coming. Yeah, it, it's, it's in the evidence we provided that we could do in, in about a week, uh, not even a week of time.
All right, um, so, uh, councillor, uh, the, the question has been raised about the traffic, and if you've looked at it, and, um, uh, the safety issue with regard to the way you're, you're proposing the building be built. Um, so would you care to respond?
If I may say, please, uh, it looks like he's misunderstanding our building, and we did talk with the community, and we talked before, and we took in consideration. Our building does not go to the sidewalk. I think it's misunderstanding there.
What's the offset from Carmen Street to your building?
Twenty-five foot five feet.
Twenty-five. Okay, so, so which, if, if, can you go to the next drawing?
From the building to the curb is twenty-five feet on the Northwest Highway. From the building to Carmen Avenue is ten foot six inches from the building to the curb. I mean, if you're gonna drive fast, you're gonna have issues. Typically, when you go to intersection, you should slow down, look both ways, and then make, then, then negotiate the turn.
Well, I, I'm sorry, so you're gonna, you're, you're gonna tell me driving fast, me? I'm talking about every other person that uses this street as a cut, which is thousands of people, okay, a day. All right, it's not me. It is everybody. Unfortunately, the way this neighborhood's designed, nobody decided to put a ramp to take from ninety-four going to downtown to ninety towards O'Hare. You know where that traffic ends up? It ends up going through Carmen Foster and everything else. Everybody cuts through. Everybody. It's not one person. So unless you could tell me how you're gonna be able to protect that, you're kind of not. Yeah, it's nothing too fast. Everybody does it. That's the problem. Any of the offset ten feet, you're still gonna, you're still gonna do it. Put up a three D model on Google Earth and show it that it doesn't. I know you'll fail.
Maybe you might wanna consider putting a stoplight there then.
Right, a stoplight, a, a stoplight, not only that, you have people going from underneath a viada, going up a hill, and they're gonna rush to make their left turn onto Northwest Highway or Carmen Street right. Yeah, that's a solution.
And, and Okay. The
I'm just telling you, please provide a model that actually shows what the building's gonna look like. And then you could have the argument, it's gonna be safe or not. I've been living here for eleven years now. I know there in a section, I could tell you how many times there's accidents, okay? You don't, and you're not going to be living there. You're gonna be renting it and not caring. Ralph only rents. I, I know him really well. He doesn't live here, okay? But ask anybody else who signed the petition. Ask anybody else who has to pull out. We have no choice, by the way. By the way, just so you guys realize, we have no choice but to pull out in that direction out of our garage, because not only that alley is much smaller, lot, well, you know, uh, like a regular typical alley is. It's probably about four feet narrower than normal alleys. So we're stuck pulling out that way. We have no choice. There's all the garages, that's the only way they could pull out. Cuz they're pointing, they're diagonally pointing in that alley. So, yeah, it is a problem there, and it's a problem anybody parking on Northwest Highway. It, it really is. And I'm sorry, I mean, I mean, I wish, I would have, if I would have known there was a town hall meeting, which, by the way, this is around the whole time we had the, uh, the runoff elections going on, so nobody really paid attention to that too much, and I know I didn't get anything in my mail about it, so.
Um, the meetings were not, were not happening during the runoff election, nor were they happening during the general elections. It was far before that.
Well, according to what I've read online, it was the March twenty-ninth runoff, so what? Yeah, April fourth. That's pretty close.
No, excuse me, sir. The meeting with the community group was done on January fourth. And, uh, we have
Did I definitely, definitely did not, did not hear anything about it.
Yeah, we had, we had the meeting on January fourth with the Jefferson Park Community Group. Uh, we received a letter from them, uh, on January twenty-fifth. By the way, I've just checked my notice provision, and you are on that notice provision, so we notified you not
That, you know what?
Not only, sir.
Okay.
Please let me, and I'm happy to, you know, not interrupt you. Uh, we did send you notice of the, uh, meeting, uh, because we sent that to everybody on our notification list. We did send you notice of the proposed hearing date, uh, uh, you have certainly my number, uh, if you called, called me and got plans, we'd happy, happy to do that. You've got the uh, to the north of the property, you've got a, the parking lot for the City of Chicago Police Department. Uh, as you can see, you've got, if I'm reading the survey correctly, it's practically a hundred and four feet from the, uh, Northwest Highway to the alley, uh, where Carmen kind of bends around, where it takes off some of our property.
Can, can I interrupt you for a second? You see the sign, you have a sales sign, that Google, this is from Google Maps, by the way. Imagine for a second, that's your corner of your building. Maybe it's a little bit off by a couple feet. Do you see how it cuts off the entire street that's coming down? And do you see how far that car is? It's past the stop sign to be able even get this much of a view? You have to understand, you see where it says no parking? Then, no parking is there, because that's where the view stops, so you can safely make a turn onto Milwaukee. Okay, that's why. It's not because of the five hundred, it, it is actually, but it's right there, right where the stop is. That's exactly where your view starts ending off. And that's the map I submitted. Because I could, I drive there every single day, and I know how far I have to pull out to be able, not to be able to get hit or try to merge onto Carmen to be able to pull out to Milwaukee. Either take, I usually only take rights, because lefts are almost impossible. Okay?
I, this is Commissioner Esposito. I feel like I understand the nature of this objection. Is there another issue?
It's the safety issue.
Okay, so I feel like, I feel like that's been explained, at least to my satisfaction.
Yeah, we, we, we get, we get the issue of what, of, of what you're saying. Um, so that is the issue in your mind.
Yeah, and unfortunately, I only drew Yeah, and unfortunately, I only drew right there just because that's really kind of the thing. Coming out of the alley, that light on sight is even, it, it's, you know, honestly, if you guys go back to two thousand and five maps, satellite maps, you'll see what the layout was, where there were two houses there. Even that front view, they had just a pool in where they would pull in the car. And, yeah, somebody did put up a shed that's maybe they shouldn't have been there, but it was just a shed. That kind of, eh, you know, you, you would have been a little bit in your view coming out of the alley, but definitely making a right turn onto Carmen or being able to make a left turn, you will be able to see everything coming. A, and, and it's, like I said, go back to the Google, Google Earth Pro, there's a timeline feature. You could go back to two thousand and five, anything below two thousand and five is black and white, it's very difficult to see.
Okay, okay, I. So, uh, any, anything, anything further on the objection? Any, anything, anything new, anything additional?
Yeah, I, I mean, no, no, just, just, I, I, I wish there was a way, you know, like I said, a, a good way of them assuring that it's not gonna cause these problems.
Got it. Got it, okay, all right, we are, uh, now going to go back to, uh, the applicant for rebuttal and closing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, as I mentioned, there's approximately, this was not brought up by any of the community groups other than the gentleman that we just spoke to. Lazlo, we talked about a ten-foot setback off of the sidewalk. The speed, and I've been there, I don't, my office is not far from there. Fortunately, been at the police station a few times, uh. The speed going on to either Northwest Highway, coming out of Carmen, coming out of Carmen going southeast is certainly, you've got a hundred and four feet from, from Northwest Highway to that alley area. Taking a left out in Milwaukee Avenue, there are stop signs. There's, there. And we did not do a traffic study, we did not believe we needed one at this point in time. And this was the first time we've ever heard of a traffic and, uh, concern. Lazlo, uh, you've designed this property, would you agree with that?
Totally. And the other thing too, if I may add, the traffic coming from the north going south is literally a, a residential street. So there's not a lot of traffic, uh, south of the, the, the property. From the north, there is because it's the end of the Northwest Highway, so people turning in, I understand. But they're turning in from the police parking lot. So that, once they cross that, the visibility is available. So if you're going from the south north, I'm sorry, yeah, from the south north, you wanna turn right, you have to turn down anyway because you can't make that turn that quickly. It's almost more beyond a ninety-degree turn, so I don't know. I mean, if cars coming from the other direction, you should be able to see that, you just, it's not a ninety-degree turn, so. I can't imagine somebody making that turn that quickly, otherwise they'll, they'll lose control. It is a concern, it's not your average, uh, uh, condition, but people should take precaution. I mean, how they drive is up to them and we can't control that. I mean, we're trying to create something that's nice for the area, it's a rental. Uh, my, my client's gonna own it, it's gonna be, excuse me, it's going to be, uh, it's going to be, uh, well maintained, so that's the best I can say at this point.
We did talk to the community about traffic. Uh, that was an issue, not, not specifically as what was mentioned, it was more of a parking issue. And when we realized that you could walk across the street, Milwaukee Avenue and catch the, uh, the bus down to Jefferson Park, you could walk approximately nine hundred feet to the train station. They were, they were okay with that as, as their letter indicated. We have support subject to building the building that we should have shown.
I'm sorry, I have to interrupt you.
Uh, no, 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 we're, 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 we're done with the objector, this is, this is closing right now.
And no further comments.
Okay. Are there any questions from the board before we take this matter under advisement? Okay, we, uh, are gonna take this matter under advisement, thank you for your time, everyone.
Thank you.
All right, now we are gonna return to calendar number one thirty-four dash twenty-three dash S, this is twenty-one thirty-seven West Walnut. If you are here in objection or support, please raise your hand and we will get you promoted. All right, again, we are, uh, recalling calendar number one thirty-four dash twenty-three dash S, this is twenty-one thirty-seven West Walnut. If you're here in objection or support, please raise your hand and we will get you promoted.
Hello?
Yes? All right, I guess, you know, um, the, the, the first question, uh, for Counselor Barton is, um, are you, are, are you looking for, do you wanna request a continuance or do you want to proceed?
Um, thank you for giving us this period to discuss this. We do wanna go forward, um, let me just say that, um, as Commissioner Toya indicated, timing really is of essence for the applicants, um. They still, they need to still go forward with their licensing for this. Um, but at the same time, we do wanna discuss this with the community members. Um, what we, toward that end, we would pledge to have a meeting with the neighbors and schedule it immediately. Uh, and to work with the alderman's office to set this up. So, um, a continuance to the June meeting would be a significant setback for the applicant, uh, so we would like to go forward with the continuance. Uh, with the understanding that, uh, we pledged to meet with the neighbors as quickly as possible, as soon as the meeting can be scheduled. So we would like the case to be considered by the board today and would seek your approval based on the testimony today and our pledge to meet with the neighbors.
Okay, okay, uh, Nikisha Coleman has her hand raised, uh, Nik- Nikisha. Go ahead and unmute.
Hello, everyone.
Yes.
I, I was, I was just curious to know, I, I understand that there will be some conversation and further uh, communication with the community and the alderman, alderman's office, but in the same breath, how then can it be a full understanding of everyone's concerns in, in the owner's interest in addressing everything prior to a vote? How could it be a, a vote in a unanimous decision or something that's still um, up in the air?
Counselor?
Sure, um. Well, the purpose of the, um, of the meeting would be to, um, to get the concerns and then to, um, set up a plan of operation for, for this, for the business, for the rooftop.
Okay.
That would, the, to meet the neighbors' concerns.
Okay. I mean, we were at the point of, of rebuttal and closing when we, when we broke. Uh, did you, did you have, uh, any, any final remarks, uh, before we, we take the matter under advisement?
Just, um, one point, um, I did wanna, um, clarify as a member, as a, you know, uh, as a member of the bar and, uh, you know, um, and of the court here. Um, the alderman isn't supportive of this, I, I established that. Um, and I believe, my, it's my understanding that the alderman's chief of staff did let, um, ZBA staff know that the alderman isn't support.
Okay. Okay.
Uh, um. Yeah, under these circumstances, no, I don't think, um, I think you've, uh, you've heard our testimony. Um, and I think we'll, we'll stand on that. And, you know, uh, we'll talk further with, uh, the neighbors.
Okay, all right, uh, I'll, I'll ask one more time to the board, just to make sure, are, are there any questions? Questions from the board commissioners, uh, before we take this under advisement? Hearing none, we will take this matter under advisement, thank you everyone for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you commissioners.
Thank you.
No more. No more.
Okay.
No more.
Next up is calendar number one thirty-seven dash twenty-three dash S. Oh, wait, one, one second here.
Goodnoon Chairman Sanchez.
Oh, uh, good afternoon, uh, Counselor Butler, are we, are we passing this for the time being?
Hey, understanding is that we are passing this for the moment.
Okay, all right, so, so we'll, we'll recall it later today, is that, is that the plan?
Uh, that is the plan as far as I know at this moment.
Okay, okay, all right, so we're gonna, we're passing on, uh, one thirty, uh, seven dash twenty-three dash S right now, uh, so we will go, uh, right now, we're gonna go to one thirty-eight dash twenty-three dash Z. This is twenty-four forty-three to forty-seven North Milwaukee. If you're here in objection or support of this matter, please raise your hand and we will get you promoted. Again, this is for calendar number one thirty-eight dash twenty-three dash Z. Twenty-four forty-three to forty-seven North Milwaukee Avenue. All right, I can see we've got, uh, the attorney for the applicant on, if you could unmute. Good afternoon, Counselor, do you have your applicant with you, because I'm not seeing?
He is directly next to me.
Oh, excellent, excellent. Okay, uh, if he, uh, if he could state, uh, if the applicant could state, uh, his name and address.
My name is Isam Hani. I live at twenty-five thirty-nine North Spalding Avenue, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six four seven.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. All right, Counselor, let me just make sure there's no objectors, had quite a few today, um. I'm not seeing any for this one, so you may proceed.
Thank you, Chairman, uh, again, my name is Attorney Alfred Ciano and I represent the applicant PMJ two four five LLC. With me today is managing member Isam Hani. Uh, the property is located at twenty-four forty-three dash forty-seven North Milwaukee in the Logan Square neighborhood. And it's zone C two dash two, it is an improved with a one-story commercial structure that was previously a restaurant that closed during the pandemic. And the, uh, and the applicant plans to open, reopen that restaurant as a Mexican restaurant. Uh, the applicant is seeking variation to establish a public place of amusement license to provide live entertainment, which is located within a hundred and twenty-five feet of a residential zoning district. There are eight other businesses with a public place of amusement license within one block of this subject or property. We submitted a reasonable return economic analysis form which shows the monthly gross profit without the variation would be an estimated seventy thousand dollars and with the variation would be approximately or estimated two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We did work with the alderman's office, uh, in regards to this, and they did suggest that we revise our plan of operation that was previously submitted for the tavern license that's already been, uh, granted to the applicant. And we have drafted a revised plan based on those comments and we'll submit that with the PPP application. At this time, I'll call my witness, um, Mr. Isam Hani, state your name for the record.
Isam Hani.
And are you a member of PMJ two four five LLC?
Yes, I am.
And how many years have you been in the restaurant hospitality business?
Twenty-plus years.
And how many restaurants and taverns do you own?
I own, uh, two taverns and five restaurants.
And how many PPA licenses do you own?
One.
And so you're familiar with operating restaurants and, but that contain a PPA license, correct?
Absolutely.
And why do you want a PPA license at this location?
Well, the purpose of having, it's a Mexican restaurant, it's called La Victoria. And the purpose is that we may have live mariachis on a regular basis, we'll have DJs. And we also may have like boxing events, stuff like that, which are pay-per-view, which at the same time are considered live entertainment, which I think we have to have, uh, PPA for. So just wanna be in compliance with the rules of operating the business.
Thank you, and we've identified that there are approximately seven to eight other businesses within one block of this location that have a PPA license, correct?
That's correct.
And based on your experience as restaurateur, how would your business be adversely affected if you were not granted the variation and the PPA?
Well, it doesn't leave a, I guess, a balanced playing field. Uh, uh, I definitely wanna be able to compete, I think competition is good, but it's not to compete with other people, we have a different concept. And our concept is unique to its own, different from everybody else's concept. And I think, um, having a PPA adds added value to the business.
Thank you, and previously I prepared an affidavit, uh, of your testimony, of what would be your testimony today, and you signed that, correct?
Absolutely.
And would your testimony be consistent to that affidavit as you had to further testify?
Yes.
With that, I'll open up questions to the board.
Any questions from the board? All right, I think we have what we need, we're gonna take this under advisement.
Thank you, Chairman and Members, have a wonderful day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is calendar numbers one thirty-nine dash twenty-three dash Z and one forty dash twenty-three dash Z. This is thirty-seven ten North Kenmore. If you're here in objection or support of this matter, please raise your hand and we will get you promoted. It's star nine to raise your hand if you're on the phone, star six to unmute. All right, Aaron Friedman, if you could unmute and then state your name and address, please.
Yes, hi, my name is Aaron Friedman and I live at two four four two North Ashland Avenue in Chicago.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, John Hannah, have I sworn you in today already?
You have.
Okay, I thought so, all right, so John Hannah, for the record, has already, uh, been sworn in. Uh, Counselor Scott. Well, let me just make sure, let me check for objectors here. I'm not seeing any objectors, Counselor Scott, you may proceed.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, uh, good afternoon, everybody, members of the, members of the board. Uh, just very briefly, again, my name is Andrew Scott with the Law Office of Dykemagossit, and I'm here with Aaron Friedman. Uh, representative and principal with the applicant, and finally, John Hannah of Hannah Architects. Uh, the relief that we're seeking today is on an unusually, uh, small lot, it's a forty-foot wide by fifty-foot deep lot. We're seeking a reduction in the rear yard, uh, from a required thirty feet to three feet. And then finally, a reduction in the south side yard setback from five feet to three point eight three feet. And then finally, we're seeking to actually increase, uh, the number of parking spaces, this is a ESL site right near the Addison. Uh, Redline Station right by Wrigley Field, uh, but we're seeking to increase the parking on the site from two spaces to three spaces. That all arising out of a lot extensive discussions that we've had with the neighborhood. And assuming approval of, uh, the proposed relief. That would allow for the development of a four-story, four-unit residential building with three parking spaces. Uh, the images that you see today, the property is currently approved, uh, with a single-family home, it's been there a number of years. Uh, the property is owned B three. As you can see from the sun, the surrounding area, you're looking south there, uh, those are the rooftops. Along Waveland Avenue, um, and this is just a, a few hundred feet north of Wrigley Field. You know, to the north of us and across the alley are multi-unit buildings, uh, you know, three flats, four flats, uh, residential of that nature. Um, we have, you know, had an extensive, uh, period of community engagement, uh, we've been in constant communication with Alderman Tony's office, I believe that you should have a letter of support. Uh, from the alderman on file. We actually had two meetings with the East Lakeview Neighbors Association to walk through the project and ultimately garnered. Their support, and finally, we also met with neighbors to the north and other neighbors in the community. And also, uh, spoke with representatives of the Chicago Cubs about the project. Um, I could go into the extensive concessions, uh, that we made over the course of the project, but just to, to sum up. We did reduce the bedroom count in the building, we reduced the height of the building, added parking spaces, we did a redesign. Um, of the, uh, you know, where the, the, uh, decks are located on the building. Uh, we eliminated a roof deck that we had originally proposed, we committed to no, uh, you know, VRBO, Airbnbs. Um, again, extensive changes to the project a result of community input. Um, just in terms of the hardship that's presented here, uh, as I mentioned, this is a very, very, uh, small lot, uh, only fifty feet deep. Uh, without the relief that we're asking for, it would be extremely difficult, uh, if not impossible to develop. Uh, a building on this site, uh, and be able to, you know, garner a reasonable return. Uh, just in terms of parking, again, I had mentioned before that, uh, you know, for those of you that have been. Uh, in the Lakeview area, in around Wrigley Field, even in the absence of a, of a Cubs game. Uh, parking is at a premium there, and so it was very, very important that my client. Reconfigure, uh, the ground floor of the building to add a parking space, even though we are near the Addison Bus Line, the Clark Street Bus Line, and also the Addison Redlon stop. Uh, we did add a parking space. To, um, yeah, to accommodate the wishes of the neighborhood. Uh, if there are no questions at the immediate time, I'd like to turn to, uh, my witnesses, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, please.
Okay. So Aaron, calling you first, um, you are a representative of the applicant entity, is that correct?
Correct.
And I prepared an affidavit of testimony on your behalf, is that correct?
Yes.
And you have reviewed that affidavit of testimony?
Yes.
And if you were called upon to testify today, would your testimony be substantially in accordance with the matter set forth in that affidavit?
Yes, it would.
Thank you. Uh, turning to John Hannah, uh, John, you are a licensed architect in the state of Illinois?
Correct.
And you're the project architect on this project, is that correct?
Correct.
And I also prepared an affidavit of testimony on your behalf, is that correct?
Uh, yes, you did.
And you've reviewed that affidavit of testimony?
I have.
And if you were called upon to testify today, uh, would your testimony be substantially in accordance with the matter set forth in that affidavit?
And yes, it would.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, I've got nothing, and my witnesses, again, were available to answer any questions that the board might have.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? All right, we have what we need, we're gonna take this under advisement.
Thank you very much, have a good weekend, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And next up is one forty-one dash twenty-three dash Z and one forty-two dash twenty-three dash Z. This is thirty-eight thirty-six North Alta Vista Terrace.
So, Mr. Chairman, uh, you should have, um. Ken and Roberta, Ken Pocina and his wife, Roberta. And then Furman Senga.
Okay. And, uh, if, if you're hearing objection or support of this matter, please raise your hand and we'll get, get you promoted. It is, uh, star, uh, nine to raise your hand if you're on the phone. And, uh, star six to unmute. Okay. All right, let's start, um, with, uh, Ken, if you could, uh, state your name and address, please?
Sure, uh, Ken Pocina, thirty-eight thirty-six North Alta Vista Terrace, Chicago, six oh six one three.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. Uh, Roberta, if you could state your name and address, please?
Of course, uh, Roberta Parkinson. Thirty-eight thirty-six North Alta Vista Terrace, Chicago, six oh six one three.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do indeed.
Thank you, and, uh, Fearman, if you could, uh, state your name and address, please?
Senior Architect, can you hear me?
Uh, now we can hear you, if you could start over, please.
Yeah, sure, I'm Furman Senga, we're senior architects, one one six West Herbert Street, Chicago, L A, six years.
All right. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings? Uh, uh, try that again, we did, did not hear you. Still not, we can't hear you. No.
Can you hear me now?
Now we can hear you. Yes.
Uh, I do, I do.
Okay, I would just say, uh, when you do speak, cause your microphone is, is kinda low, so when you do speak, make sure you project so that we can hear you when you're testifying, okay?
Sure.
Thank you. All right, uh, let me just scan here to see if any. Objectors have come. I'm not seeing any objectors. Counselor Moore, you may proceed.
Thank you very much, uh, Ken, you and your wife, uh, live at this property, how long have you lived there?
Over twenty-eight years.
Okay, and the Alta Vista, uh, Terrace, um. Row houses are a unique, uh. Uh, kind of a nineteen oh four landmark, Chicago landmarked. And, and registered on the National Register of Historic Places, and it's kind of a. Uh, development modeled after some twentieth-century London streets, is that right?
That's correct.
And however, it's got very, uh, uh, the lots are very small, they're, uh. What about, uh? Fifty by forty or something?
It's, uh, uh, frontage is twenty-four feet, and then it's probably fifty feet to the back.
Okay, and, um. So you've have had, you have in the back over your kitchen, a little atrium that's all glass. And, um, it's on the, it's in the left hand of the picture now. And it's been leaking for many years, you've tried to fix it for many years, and it continues to leak into your kitchen, is that right?
That's correct, it leaks on through the floor joists, and it's taking my kitchen ceiling down. And I've had it caulk several times, uh. And these contractors can't guarantee it, so we decided just, all right, we'll knock that down and put a regular room up.
So by, you're, you're adding just some seventy-three square, uh, floor area, seventy-three. Square feet of.
Yeah, it's tiny. Uh-oh.
Uh, Counselor Moore, you, uh, you got muted.
I'm sorry, so you're adding seventy-four square feet to the. FAR of the building and, but since it's fifty years old, uh. This board, by way of a variance, can grant you the extra seventy-four square feet, and that's what we're asking for today, is that right?
That's, that's correct.
And you've, uh, shared this with your neighbors, and you're aware of absolutely no objections, is that right?
I think they, they'll appreciate it, yes.
Okay, and, um, if you and I worked out an affidavit, if you continue to testify, you testified consistently with it, is that right?
Yes, I did.
And Roberto, is there anything you'd like to add to Ken's testimony?
Well, Ken's absolutely right, we've lived here many, many years, and we really love the neighborhood and our blocks, so. We're hoping to see this move through so that we can continue to enjoy our house.
Okay, and Furman, uh, you're a licensed architect, and you've appeared in front of this board many times, is that right?
That's correct.
And, uh, you've designed this in such a way. This room over the kitchen in such a way that it'll comply with all, if the variance is granted. It will comply with all of the ordinances and codes of the city of Chicago, is that right?
That's correct.
And it'll fit right in with the character of the neighborhood, is that right?
That's correct.
And, um, you and I worked out an affidavit, where you addressed all the criteria necessary for the board to grant this variance, and if they do grant it. Um, and if you were to continue to testify, you would testify consistently with your affidavit, is that right?
That's correct.
So, Mr. Chairman, that's our case in chief.
Any questions from the board? All right, we will take this matter under advisement, thank you everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I'm gonna, um, move that we take a short recess to four-ten. Um. So let me see here, uh, so I moved that we, uh, recess to, uh, four-ten, Commissioner Toyah seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toyah?
Yes.
Can you hear me? Can anyone hear me?
Yes.
Oh, no. Okay, I'm having problem with my um headphones. I'm so sorry. Can you just give me one second?
Sure.
I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry, thank you. I'm sorry, Chairman, if I didn't say I was ready, I am ready, I'm sorry.
No, you're good, we're just uh Commissioner Toya's coming in right now. All right, I moved that we reconvene this meeting of the zoning board of appeals. Commissioner Toya, seconds. Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, and we're back, and we are calling calendar numbers one forty-three dash twenty-three dash Z, one forty-four dash twenty-three dash Z, and one forty-five dash twenty-three dash Z. This is twenty-eight, twenty-one, North Orchard. If you're hearing objection or support of this matter, please raise your hand and we will get you promoted. Star nine to raise your hand if you're on the phone, and uh star six to unmute if you're on the phone. All right, uh Jeff, if you could unmute and then uh state your name and address, please.
My name is Jeff Poczek, J E F F. Last name Poczek, P O C Z A T E K.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Thank you, and uh John Hannah has already been sworn in today and is still under oath. Uh, counselor Moore? Not seen any objectors, you may proceed.
Thank you very much. So Jeff, um this property, um you're the executor of your sister's estate, is that right?
Yes, it is.
And your sister lived here for many years, uh and it was a single-family home, um but in her later years, it was not well-maintained and it is in disarray, is that fair?
Yes, definitely.
And so uh you're uh want to develop it as a five-unit condominium, um but it has some practical problems, is that correct?
That's correct.
It has, there is no alley, is that right?
Yes, no alley.
It's a short lot, is that right?
That's correct.
Um, it's an odd-shaped lot, it's wider at the front uh than it is in the back, is that right?
That's correct.
Uh, and it's surrounded by a nine-story uh century uh mall on two sides, is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
And John Hannah can explain the problems this poses, but uh during the process or during the time that we've been um going to see Alderman Tony and then the uh Southeast Lake neighbors and we made changes in the plans and everything, it uh because of its closeness to the L, it became a transit-served area and um that creates some additional variances we need both on the existing um curb cut and uh we, the number of parking spaces, is that right?
Yes, that's true.
You uh in as a transit-served area now, it can only have fifty percent of the parking, one-to-one parking, and to have a condominium, you really need uh a at least one parking space for each unit, is that right?
Yes, yes, you need to have one parking spot per unit, it kind of.
Okay, and so um we, this has been uh probably nine months or so. Uh, we started last summer and we had a couple of meetings with Alderman Tony, uh who now has a uh the board has received a letter of support, uh and uh we had two substantive meetings with the Southeast Lakeview neighbors where we made substantial changes based on their suggestions, and um we uh passed a type-one zoning change, is that right?
Yes, that's true.
Which means uh you either have to build it exactly as they approved it, or you'd have to start over, is that correct?
Correct.
Um, and so um we're uh here and you'd like to build this as planned, uh but you need these variances to do so, and uh you and I uh worked out of a uh affidavit where you addressed all the criteria necessary for the board to grant this, these variances, and if you continue to testify, you testify consistently with your affidavit, is that right?
That's correct.
Um, John Hannah, uh you've been on this project from the start, is that right?
I have.
And you came and uh met with Alderman Tony originally when we were talking concepts, and then you helped us with the Southeast Lakeview neighbors, is that right?
That's all true, yes.
And why um, why does um this, uh the fact that during the time we were planning this, it became a transit-served area, why does that create some uh practical problems for you in the design of the property?
Well, um, you know, we, so we needed uh because uh to make this work, uh we needed the five units surrounded by a nine-story building also, uh uh you just look at the parking garage and you can see uh, you know, if a lot isn't fifty feet wide or maybe even a little more than fifty feet wide, we have trouble making the parking work, so so we went through some gyrations and we made this all work, plus the lot being a hundred and thirteen feet deep, um that's just provided some additional uh hardships for us.
And then with the transit served, we need a uh, we needed a variance for the uh the exist, the, there is an existing curb cut, but we need help with that and with the number of parking spaces, and since there's no alley, you have to enter from the front, is that right?
That's absolutely true, yes.
Okay, um and you and I worked out an affidavit where you addressed all the criteria necessary for the board to grant these variances, and if you continue to testify, you testify consistently with that, is that right?
Uh, I would.
Mr. Chairman, that is our case in chief.
Any questions from the board?
I have one, um counselor, I always ask this question. Uh, I probably already have the answer, but I'm gonna ask it anyway. So you said it was a short lot. Is this the only lot on the street that's a short lot, or is it the whole block?
No, this this is different, this is up against the um uh the the um uh the mall there, and so it's cut off in the back and um the the, uh let's see, um, it's really kind of unique that way, um.
So, so what you're telling me this is really right for it, it's peculiar, so it's not, it's it's not the whole block, it's right for this one lot that, that's the only short lot on the on the street, that's what you're telling me?
I think that's true, uh the, and it's an odd lot too, if you see it juts in at the back, I don't. Yeah, I I it's certainly unique in the area here. Now, on the other side of the mall, I I couldn't testify to it, um but um my impression is, yes, because Clark Street is coming in there to, the whole thing is, it's very unique and odd.
Got it, all right, appreciate your answer, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other uh questions from the board? All right, we will take this matter under advisement, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next up is one forty-six dash twenty-three dash Z. This is thirty-three oh one West Hirsch. If you're hearing objection or support of this matter, please raise your hand and we will get you promoted. Star nine, if you're on the phone, to raise your hand, star six to unmute. All right, counselor, it looks like you've got uh two witnesses, is that right?
Well, well, we have um Neil Neil Carlson and possibly his wife, she was working, but she was going to try, she is there, there she is, and Mike Ryan, the architect, yes.
All right, so we'll 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 get, we'll get both of them uh sworn uh or all of them sworn. Uh, we'll start with uh Neil, if you could unmute and then state your name and address.
Neil Carlson, two thousand two West Huron Street, uh six oh six one two.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
And I don't have your uh wife's name, but uh if you could state your name and address, please?
Uh, yes, it's Elizabeth Jewett, two thousand two West Huron Street, six oh six one two.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you, and uh Mike Ryan, if you could state your name and address, please?
Michael Ryan, uh forty-five thirty-five North Kenneth in Chicago.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, counselor Moore, let me just check here to see if any objectors came up. No, I'm not seeing any, you may proceed.
Thank you, uh so Neil, you and I and I, I'm sorry, I I was calling your your wife, uh she's your longtime partner, is that right? And I'm sorry for that mistake.
Um, I'm sorry about it too now.
Well, I misled you, I'm sorry. So um you and uh your partner have uh lived in the neighborhood for how long?
Um, I've been, I've been in Chicago and where I'm at now for uh twenty-two years.
And so you saw this lot and you've always had the dream of uh kind of building your dream house and also making it a super green uh energy-efficient house, is that right?
Yes.
And so when this lot came up, you uh went to Mike Ryan and I I don't know if you came up with the technology or he came up with the technology, but you have a particular uh cement slab um uh technology that will be very green and very energy-efficient, is that right?
Yes.
And uh so you um got a plan and uh Mike Ryan created a plan for you and you um went out for bids, you um went out for bids on it, is that right?
Yes.
And then um uh he submitted it and he got a permit and uh you started building it, is that right?
That's correct.
And then at some point, um you realized uh that, well, uh after he got a permit, um or actually before he got a permit, there was a little um curveball and that's, he had to uh redesign, move the building and get a administrative adjustment um and before he got the permit, and then he got the permit, is that right?
Yes.
And then after you had uh built the um foundation and the walls, uh you realized that you would rather have a, the garage um entrance on the side street instead of through the alley, and you can do that on this corner lot, is that right?
Yes.
So you went back in to change your permit, and at that point, uh you found out that uh the foundation and the walls were uh two feet closer to the street than and and further away from the two feet um closer to the street to the east and further away from the house to the west, is that right?
Yes.
It was still exactly twenty-two feet and the combined side yards were exactly the same as they had been, but the entire thing had been put uh closer to the street and further away from the neighbor's house, is that right?
Yes.
And uh upon talking to uh Mr. Ryan and your general contractor, you found out uh that the cement contractor, the foundation contractor, had uh dug the the hole and put the foundation in based on the bid plans, and he had not gotten the revised plans, or is that right?
Uh, we we, I know that the plans were sent out, the stamped plans were sent out, uh but apparently this is what, what, you know, that was the mistake that happened, is they used.
And so what we're asking is to allow us the variance uh to keep the foundation and the walls where they are, because to tear them down and start over would be uh ruinous, is that fair?
Yes.
And the only person really affected other than yourself is the uh neighbor to the west, is that right?
Yes.
And the neighbor is very happy to get the extra two feet of light narrow, and um, is that right?
Yes, we've we've communicated, uh he's in support of the driveway and we we have, you know, we have open conversation.
Okay, and um you and I have worked out an affidavit where you addressed all the criteria necessary for the board to grant this variance, and if you continue to testify, you testify consistently with it, is that right?
Yes.
Uh, and um would you like to say anything?
I'm sorry, uh me, Thomas?
No, yeah, um I'm sorry, your partner, would she like to say anything? Add anything?
Yeah, just um mostly along the lines of the, you know, the house that we're hoping to build and the the type of members that were planning on being in that location, um we really wanted to make it eco-friendly and have gardens and make it a very welcoming um space for the community.
Okay, thank you, and uh Mike Ryan, um you've been in this from the start, is that right?
Yes.
And um actually, the house, well, you want to tell the story, you designed the house originally, um and um how did we, how did the side yard problem come up?
Um, so, yes, Neil found me and was very interested in doing a house out of I C Fs, insulated concrete forms. We researched doing SIPs as well, um but um ended up learning a lot about this technology through the process and um been an architect in Chicago for more than twenty-five years and um uh I think I I learned a valuable lesson in still checking the zoning code every time because I assumed in RS three, um there's no side yard setback like all the larger districts. So the original designs of the building had it five inches uh from the property line towards the side street of Spalding, and that was how we were uh proceeding with the design. And then, once we submitted for permit, um it came up that there is a side yard requirement on a street side, and so we ended up um seeking an administrative adjustment because they wanted to get started with construction uh uh quickly, and the predominant character of the block supported the adjustment, uh which is definitely a requirement for that nowadays, and um that's the story behind it.
So, so the administrative adjustment was granted, and then the permit was approved. Um, but the, how did the building get built? Uh, how did the foundation get built uh with the? Uh, how did the foundation get built, uh, with the prior plans?
Well, uh, you know, that's beyond my control. Um, it's my understanding the builders had multiple sets of drawings and, um, didn't have the latest and greatest in their hands. Um, it's also my understanding that the whole sidewalk was torn up at the time and it was a, a little more, uh, tricky to establish, uh, the location, but um, I wasn't there for any of that. I didn't provide any construction administration services. Um, it wasn't until, uh, Neil came back to me to revise the permit to put the driveway on the side street. Um, I, I, I did also learn that RS three is the only zoning district where you can have a driveway on a side street, uh, by right. Um, and, uh, we submitted for revision for the application. Um, I was unaware that they had proceeded as far, uh, but, uh, we got a new platter survey that showed where the building's located and that's when we discovered we had a, an issue there and, um, were required to uh, seek a variation.
And but so the, uh, the net result though, the building is still twenty-two feet wide on a twenty-five foot lot, is that right?
The building's identical to the way it was designed, it's just located in a different spot on the lot.
It's just located closer to the street and further away from the neighbor, uh, to the west, is that right?
That's correct.
And the, the, uh, side yard combination is still the same.
Correct. The combined yard, the combined sirens are the same.
And despite this, um, uh, varied start here, if the board sees fit to grant this variance, um, the building, the resulting building will be in full compliance with all codes and ordinances of the city of Chicago, is that right?
That's correct.
Uh, and you and I worked out an affidavit where you addressed all of the criteria necessary for the board to grant this variance and if they do grant this variance, uh, and if you were to continue to testify, you testify consistently with your, uh, affidavit, is that right?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, that is our case in chief.
Any questions from the board? We have what we need, we'll take it under advisement.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up is one forty-seven dash twenty-three dash Z, this is sixteen nineteen South Loomis. If you're hearing objection or support of this matter, please raise your hand and we will get you promoted. Star nine to raise your hand if you're on the phone. Star six to unmute if you're on the phone. Afternoon, Counselor Fatikas.
Good afternoon, Chairman.
It's like you've got, uh, is two witnesses, is that correct?
Oh, there's two witnesses, um, Penfilo Carrasco and, uh, Sam, uh, Pavlovic. Uh, but also, um, Rod Carrasco is going to be signing in. Uh, Rod is Penfilo's son and just to help with, uh, translation, I believe, uh, Mr. Penfilo's, uh, primary language is Spanish.
Okay. All right, I see, uh, Penfilo has his hand raised, uh, is, is his son with him?
Yes.
Okay, great. Uh, all right, if, um, if, uh, if, uh, Penfilo could unmute. It's right now you're muted, Penfilo. There we go. Okay, can you, uh, can you, can you speak?
Hello?
Ah, yes, we can hear you. Is, is this Penfilo or is this the son?
Uh, this is Rod, uh, I'm Penfilo's, uh, Penfilo's son and we're here to do what we need to do.
Excellent. Um, all right, so here's what I'm gonna do, uh, Rod, I'm gonna, I'm gonna swear you in first, uh, for translation purposes and then, uh, we'll swear, uh, your dad in, okay?
Okay.
Okay, uh, so Rod, uh, can you state your name and address, please?
Uh, yeah, Rod Carrasco, my address is, uh, twelve twenty-six North Cleaver Street, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six four two.
And do you swear or affirm to accurately and truthfully translate Spanish to English and English to Spanish?
Uh, aye, sir.
Thank you. Um, all right, now let's go, uh, to, uh, Penfilo, uh, can, uh, Penfilo state his name and address?
Uh, que si Panfilo puede decir su nombre y su dirección. Sí. You, Panfilo Carrasco, Rodri, Panfilo Carrasco, dos veinticuatro North Cleaver.
Do you swear or affirm to tell?
Sixty-six, twenty-four two.
La, la ciudad.
Chicago, Chicago. Panfilo Carrasco, twelve twenty-four North Cleaver Street, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six four two, we're neighbors.
Thank you. Uh, and do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Que acaba de decir la verdad en esta, en este proceso. Sí.
Yes, he does.
Excellent. Um, and let's go to, uh, Samuel, uh, Pavlovchik. You can state your name and address, please.
Uh, Samuel Pavlovchik, uh, four forty-four North Michigan Avenue, suite number twelve hundred, Chicago, Illinois, six zero six one one.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Fatikas, let me just scan here to see if any objectors have arrived. Nope, I'm not seeing any objectors, Counselor, you may proceed.
Okay, thank you, sir. Uh, again, uh, Nick Fatikas, for the record, I'm here today on behalf of the applicant, Penfilo Carrasco. The applicant owns the subject property at sixteen nineteen South Loomis. The, uh, subject property measures twenty-four feet wide at the front, but as you can see from the survey submitted with our application, uh, its depth dimension is cut short by a public alley that runs at an angle along the rear of the site and that's actually as function of, uh, Blue Island, which is the next, uh, arterial street to the, uh, east of the subject site. Um, the resulting lot area total, uh, given the unique, uh, lot size and shape is two thousand eight hundred and four square feet. Today, the property is approved with a two-story, two-unit residential building and Mr. Carrasco is proposing to, um, renovate the building and permit a third unit in the building's, uh, garden level. The issue is that again, the existing lottery total created by that angled alley, uh, is below the minimum lottery requirement for three residential units. So, uh, in order to, to permit the project and specifically the third residential unit, we're seeking to reduce the minimum lot area from three thousand square feet to two thousand eight hundred and four square feet. Again, you've sworn in, uh, the witnesses and I can receive the questions for Mr. Carrasco.
Okay.
Uh, Penfilo, you own the, at sixteen nineteen South Loomis?
Panfilo, usted es el dueño de la propiedad del dieciséis, diecinueve de la Loomis? Yes.
And you're proposing to renovate, uh, and add a unit at the existing two-story building, correct?
Pero, su propósito es de renovar el edificio y agregar un apartamento más? Yes.
And in order to permit the unit, we need a variation to address the lot area total, correct?
Y para hacer ese trabajo necesitamos un permiso y una variación de la ciudad para hacer ese trabajo correcto. Yes.
And other than increasing the number of units, you're not proposing to expand the existing structure, is that right?
Usted no va a expandir el lote, solamente va a construir dentro de las paredes que existen ahora. Yeah.
So all of the work will occur within the existing footprint?
Todo el trabajo va a ser dentro de la, de la línea de la propiedad correcta. Yes.
And Penfilo, is it your understanding that my office filed witness statements on your behalf in this case?
Usted recuerda que la oficina de, de él llenó, le dio unos documentos que firmara para que él lo representara y le explicara aquí el proceso. Yes.
And if you were to continue to testify, would that testimony be consistent with the statements we provided?
Y si usted siguiera atestiguando, la, la idea siguiera trabajando normalmente como igualmente como firma del documento? Yes.
Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Chairman, if I can just call the architect to speak to the hardship and then we can answer questions.
Yes.
Perfect. Um, so Samuel, again, you are a licensed architect in the state of Illinois?
Yes, I am.
And you've, uh, designed the renovation and three-unit conversion plan for the subject property, correct?
Correct.
And taking together the size and shape of the lot, again, that's created by that rear, uh, angled alley at the rear of the property and the resulting lot area total, those are the, uh, issues that create the hardships necessitating the requested variation, is that right?
Correct.
And again, as the applicant testified, um, the proposed units in the garden level within the existing footprint of the structure?
Yes.
Um, and with respect to the lot area reduction, we're at approximately six point five percent of the technical requirement, correct?
That's correct.
And per code, uh, the, uh, relief actually extends up to ten percent, right?
Correct.
Uh, and it's your professional opinion that the resulting, uh, two-story, three-unit residential building will be consistent and compatible with the neighboring residential buildings in the area, right?
Yes.
Um, Samuel, is it your understanding that my office filed witness statements on your behalf in this case?
Yes.
And if you were to continue to testify, would that testimony be consistent with the statements we provided?
Yes.
Great. Uh, Chairman, we did obtain and I, I, it was, should have been included in our findings of facts submitted, um, a letter from, and I'm gonna butcher the name, I apologize, my Spanish isn't great, but it's the Federation of McCoen Clubs in Illinois, which is a, a non-for-profit, a local community organization in the area. Um, so there was outreach to that organization about our request, um, and we have a, a letter of support from them. Um, and I believe that concludes the applicant's case in chief. We'd be happy to answer any questions you or the board members have about our proposal.
Any questions from the board? All right, hearing none, we will take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is calendar number one forty-eight dash twenty-three dash Z, this is twenty-five twenty-eight West Superior. If you're hearing objection or support of this matter, please raise your hand and we will get you promoted. So star nine to raise your hand if you are on your phone, star six to unmute. Okay, Craig, can you state your name and address, please?
Craig Castelli, nineteen fourteen West Huron Street, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six two two.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. Uh, Shannon, can you state your name and address, please?
Yes, Shannon Haffey, one nine one four West Huron, Chicago, six zero six two two.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Uh, Art, Arthur, uh, can you state your name and address, please?
Arthur Casmeric, twelve twenty-three North Milwaukee Avenue, Chicago, Illinois.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Let me just scan here. I'm not seeing any, uh, objectors, Counselor Fatikas, you may proceed.
Great, thank you, sir, again, for the record, Nick Fatikas from the offices of Sam Banks. I'm here on behalf of the applicants Craig Castelli and Shannon Haffey. Uh, Shannon and Craig own the subject property at twenty-five twenty-eight West Superior Street. The subject site measures forty-two feet wide by a hundred and twenty-two point seven five feet deep and it's approved with a two-story, single-family home. The applicants are proposing an extensive renovation and addition project at the property. Their plans, uh, include a full two-story addition, a new two-story garage with parking at grade and a living space above and an enclosed building connection between the two structures. The issue is that in addition to having an atypically sized lot, the additions and improvements were designed to follow the footprint of the home's existing building wall lines. So in order to permit the project, the applicants are seeking to reduce the west side, combined side and rear, uh, setbacks required for the lot. Uh, again, you've sworn in the witnesses, but Chairman, before I call my first witness, I, I do wanna, um, amend our application on its face. The original application also sought front setback relief, um, to maintain an existing driveway and a parking area located at the front of the property. The photo, um, up right now shows that, uh, exact feature. In working with our immediate neighbors, we actually agreed to revise the plan to remove the front driveway and replace that space with curb, parkway and landscaping at the front of our lot. Without getting too far, uh, into the specifics of those features, the subject property is the only lot on the block with a front driveway and again, based on our revisions, our proposed plan, uh, would better align with the streetscape along West Superior. Uh, and we would rely on Alix as like all of our residential neighbors. Um, that change rendered the, uh, front setback reduction and front property line setback reduction for parking moot. So we're relying on the revised, revised denial letter, uh, dated February tenth, twenty twenty-three, uh, which was submitted with our findings of fact. I just wanted to make sure the board understood why two denials were submitted. Um, and with that, I can call, uh, Craig as my first witness.
Please proceed.
Uh, Craig, again, you and your wife Shannon own the subject property at twenty-five twenty-eight Superior?
Yes, we do.
Uh, the lot measures forty-two feet wide by a hundred and twenty-two point seven feet deep?
Correct.
And it's approved with a two-story, single-family home, a front driveway and attached garage at the rear, is that right?
Yes.
And you and your wife are now proposing an extensive renovation and addition project to make the home yours?
Yep.
Uh, your plans call again for a second floor, uh, addition, a two-story garage, uh, with parking at grade and living space above and an enclosed connection between the home and the garage, is that right?
Yes.
And in order to permit your design, uh, you're seeking variations to reduce the west side, the combined side and the rear setbacks, correct?
Yes.
Um, now, as we stated in our finding effects, the middle, you're taking this project on for your family to use and enjoy?
Yes.
And that's because you currently live nearby and intend to stay here to raise your kids in this neighborhood, is that right?
That's correct.
Now, given the footprint of the home and the additional lot width, you believe you'll be able to meet your family's needs with this particular property, right?
Yes, we do.
Now, before we conclude your testimony, is it true that you reviewed your plans with both of your immediate neighbors?
Yes, it is.
And in fact, you obtained letters of support from both of those neighbors, copies of which were submitted to the board, is that right?
That's correct.
Now, as they stated in my introduction, as part of the process, you agreed again to revise the plan, removing the front driveway and replacing that with curb and landscaping?
Yes.
And that was important because now that residential streetscape on the north side of the street is consistent from side, you know, side street to side street, is that right?
Yeah, that's correct.
Um, and at this point, based on that revision, you're not aware of any, uh, concerns with the proposal?
Correct, I'm not.
And Craig, is it your understanding that my office filed witness statements on your behalf in this case?
Yes, it is.
And if you were to continue to testify, would your testimony be consistent with the statements we provided?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, Arthur, are you still with us?
Yes, I am.
You're a licensed architect in the state of Illinois?
Yes.
And you designed the building program for the proposed renovations and additions to the, uh, single-family home at the subject property, is that right?
That is correct.
And it's your professional opinion, um, that the atypical zoning lot dimensions and the home's existing non-conforming footprint, which favors the west side of the lot, uh, along with the general pattern of development in the immediate area, create the particular hardships or practical difficulties on necessitating the variations, is that right?
Yes.
And even though the subject lot is forty-two feet wide, the existing home again, uh, favors the west side?
That's correct.
And the proposed second floor addition was of course designed to follow that existing footprint, right?
Yes.
And doing that allows you, um, or allows you to maintain, uh, similar side setback conditions to what exists on our property today?
That's correct.
And again, with respect to the attached garage, it was actually designed, uh, with living space above it, correct?
Yes.
And that two-story layout triggers specifically the rear setback reduction, correct?
Correct.
And we really thought that that would be an appropriate design in this case for two reasons. First, the majority of the homes, um, on our block are one and a half and two stories in height, right?
Yes.
And again, your plan allows the applicant to spread the available FAR, um, basically over the, the property and maintain that two-story, uh, height streetscape, is that right?
That is correct.
And second, the neighboring building to the east of our lot is a multi-unit apartment building that also extends all the way to its lots' rear property line, correct?
That is correct.
So introducing living space at the rear of, of a lot on this block is actually consistent, uh, with at least one of our immediate residential neighbors, right?
Yes.
And again, because your design maintains a two-story height dimension, um, it will not impair an adequate supply of light and air to either property.
That's correct.
Either adjacent property, I'm sorry. Either adjacent property, I'm sorry.
That is correct.
And even with the setbacks and our, our revised design, um, the resulting design provides over twelve hundred and sixty square feet of open yard space at grade level, um, behind the, the primary portion of the home and along the east side, correct?
Yes.
And again, that was, uh, really important to the applicants because it does give them, um, usable, uh, open space for their family, right?
Yes.
And again, Arthur, it's your opinion that, um, provided the variations are approved, the resulting, uh, two sta- two-story, single-family home with the additions will be consistent and compatible with the other homes, uh, i- in the immediate area?
Very much so.
And it's your understanding that my office filed witness statements on your behalf in this case?
Yes.
And if you were to continue to testify, would that testimony be consistent with the statements we provided?
Yes.
Great. Uh, Chairman, that concludes the applicant's case in chief. We'd be happy to answer any questions you or the board members have about our project.
Any questions from the board? All right, we have what we need. We'll take this matter under advisement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next up is, uh, calendar number one forty-nine dash twenty-three dash S. This is fifty-one, twenty-eight West Irving Park. If you're hearing support or objection of this matter, please raise your hand and we will get you promoted. Star nine to raise your hand if you're on the phone, star six to unmute. Counselor, it looks like you've got, uh, two witnesses for this. Is this correct?
Yes, sir. Ethan Nunez and Joseph Ryan.
Excellent. Uh, Ethan, if you could, uh, state your name and address, please? And unmute first.
Yes, my name is Ethan Nunez. My address is fifty-two oh four West Newport Avenue, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six four one.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, and Joe Ryan has already been sworn in today and his expertise has been recognized.
Thanks, Chairman.
Thank you. Let me go ahead and read the department's recommendation. This is a recommendation for calendar number one forty-nine dash twenty-three dash S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed barber shop. Counselor Fatikas, you have no objectors and you may proceed.
Chairman, I'm going to try and keep this relatively short. Um, I'm here on behalf of the applicant, the Portage Gentleman Shop LLC. The applicant currently operates a licensed barber shop at fifty-three, fifty-nine West Irving Park Road. The applicant has recently purchased the ground floor retail unit at the subject property, located at fifty-one, twenty-eight West Irving Park Road, and he's proposing to relocate his business, uh, to that new address. In order to do that, we are seeking a special use because there's at least one other personal service use licensed within a thousand feet of the subject property. Um, you've sworn in our witnesses and I could begin questioning, uh, Mr. Nunez if that's okay with you.
Yes, please.
Uh, Ethan, you're the manager of the applicant, the Portage Gentleman Shop LLC?
Yes.
And again, you're proposing to relocate your existing barber shop from fifty-three, fifty-nine Irving Park Road to the subject property at fifty-one, twenty-eight West Irving Park Road. Is that right?
Yes.
And in terms of services and hours, all of your current operations are going to come with you to the new location. Is that right?
Yes.
Um, you have, uh, you're a licensed barber with over ten years of experience?
I am.
And you currently operate with two employees that, again, you intend to take with you to your new store?
Yes.
And those employees are also properly licensed for the services they provide. Is that right?
That's correct.
And again, um, hours of operations stay the same, but for the record, uh, Tuesday through Friday from nine AM to seven PM and Saturdays between nine AM and five PM, correct?
Yes.
And Ethan, is your understanding that my office filed witness statements on your behalf in this case?
Yes.
And if you were to continue to testify, would that testimony be consistent with the statements we provided?
Yes.
Great. Um, Joe, um, again, you were retaining this case to evaluate whether the requested special use um, met the general criteria for special use approval under the code?
Yes.
And based on your inspection of the subject area and surrounding land uses, you do believe that all of those criteria are met? Is that right?
That's correct, yes.
You did prepare a written, uh, land use report, um, summarizing your findings and conclusions?
I did, yes.
And it's your understanding that my office filed a copy of that report with the, the board. Is that right?
Yes.
And if you were to continue to testify, your testimony would be consistent with the statements containing your written report?
It would be, yes.
Uh, Chairman, it was abbreviated, but if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer, answer them now.
Any questions from the board? We have what we need. We'll take it under advisement. All right, next up is calendar number one fifty dash twenty-three dash Z. This is twenty-seven, twenty, West Twenty-third Street. If you're hearing objection or support of this matter, please raise your hand and we'll get you promoted. Star nine to raise your hand if you're on the phone, star six to unmute. Like two witnesses for this one as well, counselor?
Yes, sir. We have, um, Lawrence Stunning on behalf of the applicant and Peter Sterniak.
Lawrence, uh, can you unmute and then state your name and address, please?
Hello, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Oh, fantastic. Lawrence Stunning and the address is sixteen twenty-nine South Prairie, Unit ten oh one, Chicago, Illinois. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, Peter, can you state your name and address, please?
Uh, Peter Sterniak, uh, sixty-six fifty North Northwest Highway, Suite two oh five, Chicago, Illinois, six zero six three one.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. And I'm not seeing any objectors. Counselor Fatikas, you may proceed.
Thank you again, Chairman Nick Fatikas, um, from the law offices of Sam Banks. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Knightsbridge Development LLC. The applicant owns the subject property at twenty-seven, twenty, West Twenty-third Street. The subject site consists of a substandard zoning lot that measures twenty-four feet wide by a hundred and twenty-four point three two feet deep. It's currently, uh, vacant and, uh, unimproved, as you can see from the photos, uh, on the screen now. The applicant is proposing to develop the property with a new two-story, three-unit residential building. The will, uh, building will be supported by three surface parking spaces at the rear of the lot. In order to permit the development, the applicant is seeking a variation to reduce the, uh, minimum lottery requirement for three residential units, again, from three thousand square feet to two thousand nine hundred and eighty-four square feet. And basically to reiterate that point, the subject lot is only sixteen square feet short of the technical minimum lottery requirement for the proposed number of units. Otherwise, the proposed, uh, two-story building was designed to meet and comply with the underlying zoning district. Um, again, you've sworn in my witnesses and I'd be happy to ask, uh, or start questioning Lawrence.
Go ahead.
Uh, Lawrence, again, you're the manager of the applicant, Knights, Knightsbridge Development LLC?
Yes.
And that entity owns the subject property at twenty-seven, twenty, West Twenty-third Street, right?
That's correct, yes.
Again, it's a, uh, substandard zoning lot that's currently vacant and unimproved?
Yes.
And you're proposing to develop it with a new two-story, three-unit building. Is that right?
Correct.
And in order to, uh, permit the three-unit total and make up for the sixteen square feet of lot area that were short, you're seeking a variation. Is that right?
Yes.
But again, the building was otherwise d- designed to comply with the underlying RT four zoning district, right?
Yes.
And provided the board, uh, approves the relief, your plan is to rent the, propose the new units on the open market?
Yes, correct.
And you've provided the board with an economic analysis summarizing your costs, uh, as well as your anticipated rate of return. Is that right?
Yes.
And Lawrence, is it, uh, your understanding that my office filed statements on your behalf in this case?
Yes, correct.
And if you were to continue to testify, would that testimony be consistent with the statements we provided?
Yes, one hundred percent.
Thank you. Uh, Peter, um, again, you're a licensed architect in the state of Illinois?
That's correct.
And you designed the proposed two-story, three-unit building?
Yes, I did.
And again, it's your professional opinion that the substandard zoning lot dimensions, uh, create the practical difficulties or particular hardships in this case. Is that right?
That's right.
To emphasize that point, if the lot was even a foot wider or point six eight feet deeper, we wouldn't need any zoning relief for the proposed multi-unit building. Is that right?
That's right.
And Peter, is it your understanding, um, I'm sorry, is it your professional opinion that the resulting two-story, multi-unit building will be consistent and compatible with the neighboring residential buildings on the block?
Very much so.
And is it your understanding that my office filed witness statements on your behalf in this case?
Yes.
And if you were to continue to testify, would that testimony be consistent with the statements we provided?
Correct.
Thank you very much, Chairman. Um, again, that concludes the applicant's case in chief. We'd be happy to answer any questions you for the board members have about our project.
Any questions from the board? We have what we need. We'll take it under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, next up is calendar numbers one fifty-one dash twenty-three dash S, one fifty-two dash twenty-three dash Z, one fifty-three dash twenty-three dash Z, one fifty-four dash twenty-three dash Z, and one fifty-five dash twenty-three dash Z. This is forty-five, fifty-three North Dover. If you're hearing objection or support of this matter, please raise your hand and we will get you promoted. Uh, it's a star nine to raise your hand if you are, uh, on the phone. It is star six. Um, if, uh, to unmute if you're on the phone. All right, I can see a lot of hands getting raised. Let's see, we also have the Alderman on. Alderman, I will get to you in just one second here. You have, um, you have four, uh, witnesses?
Uh, we should have, yes, uh, both Aiman and Nadia Khalil, Bill Kokalias, and Kareem Musawir.
Okay, and I can see, uh, that we've, um, got, uh, Alderman, uh, Kapelman on. Uh, Alderman, did you want to speak at the beginning? Uh, at the end, it's, it's your call.
Uh, the end would be fine. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, great. All right, let me get everybody sworn in. Um, and let's start with, uh, Na- Nadia. If you could state your name and address, please? Just have to go ahead and there we go.
Hi, I'm Nadia Khalil. Uh, I live at thirteen forty-five North Campbell, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six two two.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do, yes.
Thank you. And, uh, Aiman, uh, if you could state your name and address, please?
Aiman Khalil, thirteen forty-five North Campbell, Chicago, six oh six two two.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do.
And do we have, uh, Bill, uh, Kokalias?
Yes, I'm right here.
Excellent. Uh, could you state your name and address, please?
Uh, this is Bill Kokalias, Oxios Architects and Consultants, one eighty-eight North Wells, Chicago, Illinois, Principal of Oxios Architects.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. And, uh, Kareem Musawir has already been sworn in today and his expertise has been recognized. Let me, um, go to the others on the call now. Let's see here, uh, Jo- Joanne, uh, Gannett. If you could unmute and then first let me, uh, know if you're hearing objection or support?
Uh, objection.
Okay, and could you state your name and address? And for, for everyone, um, as I'm asking for your address, if there is a unit or apartment number, please let us know, uh, so that you can get a c- a copy of the, uh, of the, uh, resolution. So go ahead, Joanne.
Uh, Joanne Gannett, uh, J O A N N E G A N N E T T. Excuse me, forty-seven, twenty-three North Dover Street, uh, Chicago, Illinois.
Do you swear? Oh.
Sorry.
Was there a unit or apartment number?
No, no.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. Would, um, uh, ri- the one with the, uh, with the name of Ra- Raymond Doc?
Ray.
Ray.
Ray Mendoc. I live at forty-five, twelve North Beacon Street, Unit two, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six four oh.
And are you hearing objection?
Opposition.
Uh, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Uh, Martin, uh, Tangora, you could unmute?
There we are.
Are you here in objection?
In objection, yes.
Could you state your name and address, please?
Uh, Martin Tangora, forty-six thirty-six North Magnolia Avenue, six oh six four oh.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. And I'll get, uh, the Alderman sworn in now as well. Uh, Alderman Kapelman, if you could just state your name and role, please?
Uh, Alderman James Kapelman, forty-six Ward, Alderman City, Chicago.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. Okay, let me just read, uh, a little statement on how this hearing is going to proceed since we do have objectors. I want to remind everyone that this is not a town hall. This is a hearing, so we as the board are looking for evidence that either supports or does not support the applicant's case. Here is how the hearing is going to proceed. First, the applicant will put on their case and all of their witnesses. Then we'll turn to the objectors and the objectors can put on their case as well as ask questions of the applicant's witnesses. After that, the applicant can ask questions of the objectors. Then we'll return to the applicant for rebuttal testimony and closing remarks. After that, the board will take the matter under advisement. Throughout the hearing, board members may ask questions of both the applicant and objectors. So with that said, uh, Counselor Fatikas, um, please put on your case in full.
Thank you, sir. Again, uh, for the record, Nick Fatikas with the law offices of Sam Banks. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, the Wilson Dover Investment Partners LLC. The, uh, applicant owns the subject property at forty-five, fifty-three North Dover Street. Uh, as you can see from the survey, the, uh, subject zoning lot is a trapezoid-shaped corner lot with seventy-seven point eight feet of frontage along North Dover and a hundred and seventy-three point eight one feet of frontage along North Des Plaines. The property is located in a B three dash three zoning district and it's a transit-serve location based on its proximity to the CTA station at Wilson Avenue.
Counselor, I'm sorry, let me jump in for just a second. I forgot to read the, uh,
Oh, the recommendation, sorry.
Special use.
Yep.
Um, so let me just read this. This is the recommendation for calendar number one fifty-one dash twenty-three dash S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval to establish residential use below the second floor for a proposed five-story, twenty-eight dwelling unit building with garage with a twenty-five autom- with a twenty-five automobile parking spaces and twenty-nine bike parking spaces, provided the development is consistent with the design and layout of the site plan, landscape plan, and first floor plan dated April twelfth, twenty twenty-three, and second floor plan, third through fifth floor plan, roof plan, north elevation, east and west elevations, and south elevation dated March twenty-one, twenty twenty-three, all prepared by Axios Architects and Consultants. Now you may proceed, Counselor.
Okay, so again, uh, today, the subject property is approved with a one-story, multi-tenant retail building. Off-street surface parking is provided via an existing driveway located on the North Dover Street, uh, frontage of the lot. The applicant is proposing to take down the existing building and develop the property with a new five-story residential building. The proposed building will be, uh, will have twenty-eight residential units and off-street garage parking for twenty-five cars. In order to permit the new building, the applicant is seeking a special use to permit In order to permit the new building, the applicant is seeking a special use to permit residential uses below the second floor and variations to reduce the front, south side, and rear setbacks, reduce the off-street parking ratio, waive the loading berth requirement, and increase the allowable building height. There will be four witnesses available to testify on behalf of the applicant, uh Aiman and Nadia Khalil, our project architect, Mr. Bill Kokalas, and our land use consultant, Mr. Kareem Musawir. And with that, um, if I can call Nadia uh first, Nadia, uh, again, you're the manager of the applicant, Wilson Dover Investment Partners LLC?
Yes.
And that entity owns the subject property at forty-five fifty-three North Dover Street, is that right?
That is correct, yes.
And uh Aiman, you are the development coordinator, uh, that's your role with the LLC?
Yes.
And you led the community outreach and design of the proposed building, is that right?
Correct.
Um, Aiman, uh, again, as I described it, the subject property is a trapezoidal uh corner lot located at the intersection of Dover and West Wilson Avenue?
Yes.
And you um are again proposing to develop the property with a new five-story, twenty-eight-unit residential building, is that right?
Yes, we are.
Um, you're seeking a special use and variations to permit the project because of the lot's atypical shape and dimensions via abutting residential zoning district to the south and the neighboring special purpose overlay districts, is that right?
Correct.
And we'll get into the practical hardships of Mr. Kokalas. Um, but your program was designed to maintain street frontages on both uh North Dover and West Wilson, is that right?
Yes.
And as part of that effort, you're proposing to remove the existing driveway located on North Dover and replace it with Parkway and uh curb Parkway and a landscape setback to better match the uh the rest of that block, is that right?
Yes.
And that was a design feature that was actually discussed at length uh with both the community members, uh block club associations, as well as the Alderman's office, correct?
Yes.
And on that point, is it true that our team participated in several meetings with the local community uh and Alderman Kapelman specific to this proposal?
Yes.
You also met directly with the property owner of the two residential buildings located immediately south of the subject property, is that right?
Yes.
And in fact, you obtained their consent uh and and uh a- approval for this specific plan, is that right?
Yes.
And again, provided the board grants the relief, your plan is to lease the residential units on the open market?
Yes.
And you provided the board with a summary of your anticipated costs and projected return uh for the project, is that right?
Yes.
And is it your understanding that my office filed witness statements on your behalf in this case?
Yes.
And if you were to continue to testify, would your testimony be consistent with the statements we provided?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, Bill, uh, again, you're a licensed architect in the state of Illinois?
Yes, uh, I'm sorry, I had it on mute. Yes, uh, I'm a licensed architect, correct.
And you uh and your firm designed the proposed uh residential building for the subject property, is that right?
That's correct.
And in order to permit the design, we're seeking several variations, correct?
Yes.
Um, more specifically, we're proposing to reduce the front, south side, and rear setbacks, reduce the off-street parking total, waive the loading wi- excuse me, waive the loading berth, and increase the allowable building height, is that right?
That's correct.
Now, in terms of hardship, the real hardship in this case relates to the atypical lot dimensions, its corner lot location, and the abutting residential and special overlay districts, is that right?
That is correct.
Now, with respect to the front and side setback reductions, again, both are triggered in this case by the abutting RT four district to the south, correct?
That is correct.
And that's an issue in this case because on its own, a B three dash three zone lot would not have a front or side setback requirements, correct?
Correct.
Still, you're uh proposing, um, your proposed fifteen-foot setback along North Dover Street matches the fifteen-foot front setback of the two adjacent buildings to the south, correct?
Yes.
Uh, and that maintains again a a consistent street frontage um on the north end of our block, right?
That is correct, yes.
And Bill, the zero south side setback will not impact the neighbor to the south because the applicant actually owns the twenty-five-foot parcel between the subject lot and our nearest residential neighbor to the south, right?
Yes.
So any impact would actually be borne by the applicant and not a neighboring property owner, right?
That is correct.
Now, with respect to the rear setback relief, it allows you to to maintain a consistent frontage along West Wilson Avenue?
Yes.
And it replicates or follows the uh footprint of the existing building, which is actually built right up to the rear lot line along the alley, is that right?
That's right.
And again, Mr. Chairman, just for the record, the survey submitted with our finds of fact shows the existing building conditions on the lot today. Um, so Bill, at at three point two five feet uh of a rear setback, we're actually improving, albeit by three feet, uh, the existing conditions at the at on the alley side of the property, is that right?
That is correct. Yeah, there were some pictures earlier that showed the alley with a bunch of uh transformers, um, so yes, it is improving it.
And uh with respect to the parking reduction, again, the subject property is a transit-serve location, right?
Yes.
Now, under the new ordinance, we'd only be required to provide fourteen off-street parking spaces, correct?
Correct.
Um, but still, being that parking was an issue that was raised again at length with the community uh during that review process, you maximize the amount of off-street parking on the building's first floor, right?
That's correct.
Okay, and again, given the shape of the lot and this corresponding parking stall and aisle width requirements, the the most we can offer is twenty-five parking spaces to support twenty-eight residential units, right?
Uh, yes.
But if uh but again, the fact that we're a transit-serve location in close proximity to the Wilson Avenue CTA station helps us offset any impact created by the reduction of those three technical parking spaces, right?
That is correct.
And really, the same is true of the loading berth requirement, is that right?
That's correct.
Based on the unique lot dimensions and our effort to maximize off-street parking, we simply don't have additional space onsite to provide a dedicated ten by twenty-five loading berth within our building, right?
That's correct.
And if we opted to provide the loading berth, which again was explained during the community review process, it would actually force us to lose additional off-street parking, right?
That is correct, yes.
So again, trying to meet um general community concerns led us down the path of of parking over the uh loading berth requirement, right?
Correct.
And again, in order to offset the uh technical loading berth uh reduction, we've actually designated a loading area along the property's West Wi- West Wilson Avenue frontage, correct?
That is correct.
And again, Mr. Chairman, that uh loading zone was reflected with red hash marks on the revised site plan um that was referenced by in DPD's uh recommendation letter. Um, and Bill, uh, we believe we have the Alderman's support to formally permit that feature, is that right?
That's correct.
And you've also, um, in terms of design, uh, provided garage doors that uh would be able to accommodate the smaller delivery trucks and box trucks that are typical in the city for move-in and move-out, is that right?
Yeah, we provided a ten-foot door and uh yeah, I've done some research and we can get a uh uh a fifteen-foot box truck uh that can move a two-bedroom unit uh into this building if you needed to get in inside the building for some reason or another.
And and the the point of that was to take any type of move-in, move-out, although we we are talking about a loading berth uh or a loading zone in front of the building, even still, we can accommodate move-in and move-out on our property and not uh create a new impact uh with additional traffic on Wilson, is that right?
That is correct.
Okay, lastly, uh, we are seeking a variation to allow a technical height increase from sixty feet to sixty-six feet, is that right?
That's correct.
And that ten percent uh increase is actually allowed by code, again, provided a variation is approved, is that right?
Yes.
And in this case, um, the height that that's at issue, that the height that the increase would permit is only for the elevator override, is that right?
That is correct. Uh, the rest of the building is in uh is in compliance. Uh, it's only the elevator shaft that extends up to the uh through the roof.
So the the, to make that point, again, sixty-foot uh five-story building is what the current zoning uh would allow, is that right?
Correct, yes.
Okay, Bill, and it's your professional opinion that the proposed building will be consistent compatible with the other multi-unit residential buildings in the immediate area, is that right?
Yes.
Um, Chairman, just uh because we have objectives, if I can go through the standards uh with Mr. Kokalas. Uh, with respect to the variation standards, Bill, it's your professional opinion, uh, will the granting of these variations be detrimental to the public welfare or injurious to other property or improvements in the area?
No, the proposed development is wholly contained on the subject lot and follows the established pattern of multi-unit residential development in neighborhood land uses.
Bill, will these variations impair an adequate supply of light and air to adjacent property?
No, the proposed five-story building that you see in front of you is allowed uh in the B three-three and only the elevator override encroaches beyond the sixty-foot height limit. Moreover, the proposed front setback matches the fifteen-foot setback of the two neighboring buildings to the south uh which are at least fifty feet wide, so it's over a hundred feet uh of the subject site. Our south uh our south side property line is separated by twenty-five-foot wide parcel to the south and the rear setback along the alley mimics and even improves the setback condition compared to the existing building that we have today.
And will these variations, in your opinion, increase the danger of fire or endanger public safety?
No, the building will require permits to ensure life safety, compliance, and safety and safe residential occupancy of the building.
And will these variations substantially increase congestion in the public streets in the area?
No, this is uh this is a design transit-serve location that will offer twenty-five parking spaces uh indoor to support the twenty-eight residential units. The proposed building will also have bicycle storage to accommodate tenant needs. And we, as we discussed, we are already working with the Alderman to establish a loading zone along uh West Wilson to help offset any impact created by the waiver of the technical loading berth.
And in your opinion, will the proposed variations substantially diminish or impair property values in the area?
No, the proposed development will allow the applicant to achieve the best use of the subject property. The building will be financially viable and was designed to meet tenant demands in a local rental market.
And again, on that point, Bill, all of the surrounding uh corner properties are multi-unit all-residential buildings, is that right?
Yeah, that's right, or courtyard, uh, they're uh older courtyard buildings, correct.
And lastly, will these variations, in your opinion, alter the essential character of the locality?
No, not at all. The project was specifically designed to maintain the traditional multi-unit residential character, even though the subject property is not included in either uh of the special district boundaries, it abuts those districts and influence the design of our building. It is also important to note that the three neighboring buildings at the intersection of North Dover and Wilson Avenue are all multi-unit residential in nature. North Dover Street is almost entirely residential to the north and south. The proposed bill, uh, multi-unit residential building follows the essential character of the locality.
And Bill, is it your understanding that my office filed witness statements on your behalf in this case?
Yes.
And if you were to continue to testify, would that testimony be consistent with the statements we provided?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, Kareem, you still with us?
I'm still here, Nick.
Yeah, thank you. Um, and again, the scope of your assignment in this case was to determine whether the requested requested special use complied with the general criteria for special use approval per the code, is that right?
That's correct.
And you were also asked to provide an opinion regarding the variations and underlying lot hardships, right?
Right.
You physically inspected the subject property in the surrounding area?
Yes, sir, on a number of occasions.
And you prepared a written zoning report summarizing your findings and conclusions, is that right?
Uh, that's right, I did.
And um to to try and get to the conclusions here, it's your professional opinion that the lot's unique dimensions, its corner lot location, and the abutting residential zoning district and special purpose overlay districts serve as the hardships necessitating the requested variation, is that right?
That's correct.
Um, and again, without reciting Mr. Kokalas' testimony, it's your professional opinion that the requested variations do meet the applicable uh approval criteria, right?
Absolutely, yes.
And with respect to the special use standards, do you believe the proposed special use complies with all applicable standards of the ordinance?
I do, yes.
And uh is the proposed special use in the interest of public convenience? And will it not have an adverse, I'm sorry, a significant adverse impact on the general welfare of the neighborhood?
Yes, you know, even though this is a transit-serve location where you will only be required to provide fifty percent of the off-street parking, we're providing twenty-five spaces at this location up for twenty-eight units. So that's definitely a public convenience.
And is it your uh, excuse me, is it your opinion that the special use is compatible with the surrounding area in terms of site planning, building scale, and project design?
Yes, it is. Um, again, it is uh compatible with the other four-corner large residential uh developments at this intersection.
Right, and those range uh, so for the board's information, those range between three and four stories in height, is that right?
That's right.
And then just uh west of the subject property on the north side of the street is another five-story residential multi-unit building, is that right?
That's, that's right.
And those are all within, what we'll call it, four lots, four zoning lots of the subject site?
Right.
Kareem, is it uh is the special use, in your opinion, compatible with the surrounding area in terms of operating characteristics such as hours of operation, noise, and traffic generation?
Yes, it it goes back to a residential nature rather than a commercial nature, and this is basically a residential neighborhood.
And we have no reason to believe it would operate any different than the multi-unit residential buildings surrounding the property, right?
That's correct.
And lastly, Kareem, um, is it your opinion um that the special use has been designed to promote pedestrian safety and comfort?
Yes, we worked on that quite a bit with the neighbors and our community meetings.
And uh just to uh expound on that, we are removing an existing driveway on North Dover Street, which is essentially more of a residential block, is that right?
That's right.
And we're also proposing the driveway to the proposed garage parking spaces twenty-eight feet away from the alley, is that right?
That's correct.
Based on our review with DPD, the minimum standard's ten feet, so we're almost three times the separation requirement between the alley and the driveway um to our our onsite parking, right?
Right.
And again, for these reasons, you believe we are um or the project has been designed to promote pedestrian safety and comfort?
Yes, that and the other special features that the community requested, such as the lighting and the when the garage door opens, the light comes on, when the uh uh vehicle approaches, there's a sound. So they asked for all of that uh to help uh protect pedestrian safety and and promote the comfort of pedestrians. I believe that and as well as its primary design renders it uh compatible.
Right, and when along with that that primary design, the building entrance, the residential building entrance is actually along uh the North Dover Street frontage, right?
Correct.
So it's separated from the vehicle access that would come off of of West Wilson.
That's right.
And Kareem, is it your understanding that my office filed a copy of your written report to the board?
Yes, sir.
And if you were to continue to testify, would your testimony be consistent with the uh statements contained in your written report?
It would, yes.
Thank you very much. Uh, Chairman, that concludes the applicant's case in chief. We'd be happy to answer any questions you or the board members have about our project.
Any questions from the board at this time?
Uh, yes, this is Commissioner Esposito. Uh, just could you say a few more words uh uh the architect about the elevator penthouse? Uh, where is it placed and how large is it? And is there just one single penthouse?
Yeah, it's uh it's one, it's one, there you go, go back one slide. It's one elevator. Uh, it's the overrun. Uh, it's right where the entry is, rounded entry that you see there. It's towards the back, it's uh, I'm looking at it on my plan. It's about six, eh, about fifteen feet from our building and about uh at another fifteen, so about thirty feet from the from the sidewalk.
Is it shown on the next drawing?
Um.
From the, from the top? I thought I saw a plan.
No, you, uh, if you see it right there, if you look at where the elevator is, it's
Yes.
There you go. Uh, it says elevator penthouse. Um, so it's pushed back from the building. Uh, we don't have a roof deck, we only have roof access we, because we have large balconies on this building for each tenant, so we decided not to go with a a roof deck, and there's only one stairs in the rear that goes up to the roof.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board at this time? All right, let's uh turn to the uh objection. All right, let's uh turn to the uh objectors. And let's um. It let's start with uh Joanne. Uh if you'd like to unmute and um. State uh why you're in objection to the project.
Okay, excuse me. I'm Joanne Gannett. Um I'm really standing in here for Scott Adams, who's the president of Dover Street Neighbors. Uh he's on his way back from California for work, but he's in transit at the moment. Excuse me, so I was not planning to be here, but I know that he sent a letter to your committee. Uh from Dover Street Neighbors. And we have had several meetings with the developers and the and the project, and I think they have made some. Significant changes uh which have been great. Um we had two. Uh sort of lingering objections. And the first one is, I know there's been a lot of discussion about that garage, but um. We we still feel this did come up at our, I think at both meetings. Um but we still feel that having a curb cut on Wilson. Um is very irregular. A, there according to the letter. Between Broadway and Clark, the only curb cuts on Wilson are a Truman College, a planned development, and the Muni Mall at Magnolia. Neither has a garage door next to the sidewalk and both afford excellent visibility to pedestrians and drivers. So the basic concept, though, I think, is that. Even though I know you stated that the garage is twenty eight feet from the alley. They seem to be both, and we have been concerned about. Pedestrian safety, especially given this is the TOD development and pedestrians are walking from the L. At Broadway and Wilson to the entry to the building. And so it just seems to us that there will be a lot of. Traffic between the alley and the garage and that that is potentially unsafe for pedestrians. Um I think related to that also is this idea, I know. I don't know, the loading zone on Wilson, I just think with moving uh with a twenty eight unit building. Um I think there will be a lot of moving in and out, and I think that um. Smaller trucks will be able to get in to the garage, but I just can see that there will be. A lot of moving trucks like clogging up Wilson Avenue. Um especially like during May and whatever our our moving cycle is in Chicago. So that is one main concern. The other concern that um Dover Street did discuss and um it's. It's a to me secondary, but um people have talked about this wall of brick, like the front facade. We're we're thinking of the character of the the neighborhood. Um Dover Street is a city landmark street and we treasure our architecture. You know, do, and we um value it and we we feel it's a unique and very precious in Chicago. And um so people felt that the front facade, there's that. The whole this wall of brick between the second floor and up to the whatever fourth floor is just um. Several, many people have asked for more, some sort of greater embellishment or something to make it. A little bit more distinctive in character. And I think the um architect said that they were very happy to work on that, but. You know, these seem to be the final plans and we haven't seen anything on that, so. Um that is a reservation. So those are our two reservations. Thank you.
And did you uh did you have any questions for the applicant?
No, I we we've had, we've had several talks, you know, they've been on Zoom. It's not ideal. Well, this is a Zoom. We're doing well, I think, but um. But we we have discussed a lot of these things. I think they've done, you know, a nice job with the sort of the landscaping. They set back the building a bit more, et cetera, but there's there's been, there has been fronts to our concerns. But these are still issues for us. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's go to um uh Ray. Uh if if you'd like to uh explain uh your objection and if um. You know, one of the things that I'd like to say is just if you agree with what's been said uh by um. Uh Joanne, then you can say that and then add something new. The point being that we want to try to avoid redundancy.
And I appreciate that. Um uh my name is Ray Mindock. I have been a resident of Sheridan Park for thirty years. I live on the forty five hundred block of North Beacon, and I share the alley with the development. During my time within Sheridan Park, I've worked on many zoning issues, including the working with the establishing the setbacks, additional zoning work. I've worked with the city, primarily with the former former Alderman Helen Schiller. I've worked with the Department of Zoning, Tom Smith, and Steve Valentino. So all of the protections we've put in place have been done through the city. Uh the position that I would like to present is that the application for reduction of the front setback from fifty to fifteen feet is not appropriate. And and I believe that substantiated by the protections we have in place, specifically the special overlay districts. Um if can we show the, please show the zoning map that I provided. Um as evidence.
Let's see if we can.
Give a better understanding. It's a file fifteen dash twenty-three dash the Sheridan Park Special Districts.
Give our staff just a second while we uh try to locate that.
May I say something? Am I still?
There we go. That's it, yes. Joanne, did you want to say something?
Oh, no, uh I I do have another comment that I completely forgot, but uh after you, go please go ahead.
Okay. Okay, so um is indicated by the by this figure, the zoning figure. The property is the green dock. It's located within seventeen dash seven thirteen hundred. S D dash twenty-three and seventeen dash seven fourteen hundred S D twenty-four. The Sheridan Park Special Character Overlay Districts.
Hold on, we've got an objection. What's what's the objection, Counselor?
Your Honor, the uh testified, the objector testified that it's within the special purpose district. We're not, we're expressly. We're surrounded by, we're not in it, though.
You're surrounded, sorry, sorry for that.
Okay.
Um. So s- um S D twenty-three is the north district. S D twenty-four is the south district, and I do believe that a portion of the property is located within S D twenty-four. That southern, that southern parcel. Um both sections seventeen dash seven thirteen oh one and seventeen dash seven fourteen oh one. State that the purpose of the Sheridan Park Special Character Overlay Districts. Is are to require larger front setbacks for new residential development. Consistent with the existing pattern of fronts yards in the neighborhood. The applicant has requested that no, no retail is required on the first floor. This is a new residential development, and therefore I believe the special districts should apply. A little bit more looking at the map. If you can see along Wilson Avenue, the buildings both to the north and to the south. House and Wilson Avenue respects, respect the special district setbacks. Regardless of the zoning designation or whether it's business or residential. You can see on Dover where the blue, where the green dot is, Beacon Street, Malden. And Magnolia, all of the setbacks are re- are consistent with the the existing buildings. This building is also within the surrounds of the Dover Street Historical District. And that denotes the special characteristics of the buildings on Dover Street. I'd like to point out that the three California walk-up apartment buildings located directly to the property on the south. Are non-conforming structures. They were non-conforming structures when the special district was established. And actually, the construction of these buildings were some of the motivation to establish a special districts. Um if I can go back to the code, which I believe um. Is consistent with the southern property seventeen dash seven fourteen oh two A. The minimum front setback is thirty feet, with the exception that within sub-district A, where the minimum front setback is twenty feet. Um I would like to add that the setback overlays have been reinforced with all developments within Sheridan Park. Since they've been put in place. And if we can just stay on the the zoning map there. I do believe that the setback variance would alter the essential character of the neighborhood. And that the um as you can see evidenced by the the existing structures. Along Wilson Avenue, all of the setbacks have been have been respected. So that is, that is the statement that I would like to provide.
Okay, all right. Uh thank you. Um. Let's see here. Oh, uh uh Counselor uh Fatikas, you'll, you're gonna have rebuttal.
I just. The statement was made that the southern portion of our lot is within the special district. And I need to be expressly clear with the board members that it's not. It was, we our survey is, it shows a lot. The lot that we're establishing for the proposed building is wholly outside either special district. Had it been in one of the special districts, the relief request would have been different for the uh from the denial letters. I.
Okay.
I I I I I'm sorry to debate that issue, but we are one hundred percent outside of the special districts. I just, I need to make sure that's clear for the record.
Okay, all right. You'll, you're gonna get your your opportunity for rebuttal, as you always do. Um but right now, let's let's stick with the objectors. Um before I go to uh Martin, uh because he's been waiting patiently, but I did hear that Joanne had one more thing she wanted to uh say. Uh Joanne, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm sorry. I did forget to, my whole point was going to be about that, the garage, the the curb cut. Is that the original plans, and we did talk about this at our meeting uh with the developers, but the original plans did show the garage. Uh entry from the alley. I know that there are the utility poles, but. In place there, but be that as it may, they had originally planned that first floor with the garage. Off the alley, which to us would be uh you know, an incredible uh. Um success. Thank you, that's.
Thank you. And let's go to uh Martin. Um Martin, feel free to uh say that, you know, if you agree with what the. First two objectors have said, uh you can say that, and then if you want to add something new. Uh the point being trying to avoid redundancy.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I know it's uh what, five o'clock? It's after five.
It's early.
I support everything. Sorry?
For the zoning board, it's early still.
Oh, uh that's too bad for you, but uh it's been a long day for me. I support everything that Joanne said. I support everything that Ray said. Uh. Ray worked with Alderman Schiller to get these setbacks, and I uh totally support that. I I I have some uh problems with some of the statements that were made by the uh advocates. Uh to to say that the buildings on the other uh corners of Wilson and Dover are four or five stories is misleading. Uh all the buildings that front on Dover Street in this uh immediate two blocks are uh at most. Three stories over a raised basement, and to call that four stories is misleading. This is, this building is five full stories and uh. I think there's only one building on Dover that is four full stories, and when it was built up toward Lawrence. It created a uh movement along Dover Street to get down zoning and landmark district. It was very offensive to see a four-story building built on Dover Street, but this is five stories. So what I want, uh I sent in a letter and I sent in uh two maps and two photographs. I don't know if it's possible to see those. But as far as the letter is concerned, I'll just summarize. The main point is. Uh this this property was suggested by the neighbors. To be part of the landmark district when we offered it to the city. And it was left out and the rationale, there, thank you very much. This is uh the platmat. And you dotted like the the red pin at the upper left is the is subject property forty-five fifty over. And you see to the east of that, the dashed line, that's the building line, which is in all the original deeds in the subdivision of eighteen ninety-one. So that was a fifty-foot setback, and that is in the deed of this property. Um and it was also in the deeds of the three California-style buildings. They're now the next properties to the south. So to use those as references for the setback is dubious. Uh the correct setback for the corner property is fifty feet. Now the uh. The corner property was left out of the Dover Landmark District, and we were told it was because it was not residential. I don't know what the reasons, but that's what we were told. And if it's not, if it's going to be fully residential now, it shouldn't be left out of the uh district. It should be subject to the same setbacks. So um we have here a landmark district, and this property is right in the middle of the landmark district. And this is also part of a larger National Register Historic District. And this uh is part of that, and and the overlay districts. The special character overlay districts like S D twenty-four that Ray Mindock mentioned. Those were created in order to preserve the streetscapes of the National Register District and the Landmark District. And uh it's not. Sane, it's not sensible to say that this building conforms in. Size, scale, and design to the rest of the area. This just doesn't. On Dover Street, there's maybe only the one. Four-story building, two blocks away, that is four stories high. Thank you. That, this is one of the two maps that I submitted. And it's just the building footprint map, and across the top of the map, you see Wilson Avenue. And the subject property is uh almost in the center of Wilson there. Where it says thirteen something, those are the street numbers on Wilson. And you see that the the existing building and the one across from it, and all three corners have the. Large original setbacks. Only those three buildings immediately to the south violate and approach on that setback quite seriously. And then if you go on down Dover, you see the original uh building line. So this, this is not just pushing all the way almost to the sidewalk. It's also pushing up five stories higher and farther forward than any other building facing Dover Street. And it's not uh the idea in my mind of what the zoning board of appeals is for. Is to allow this kind of huge height increase and huge setback decrease. In the middle of any area, much less a National Register District and a Chicago Landmark District. That in sum, that's my objection.
Okay, thank you. Um all right, uh we are now.
Oh, go ahead. That I, those are the two pictures I sent, and uh they show what an attractive building this is. This is the existing building. The architect, uh I'm sure Mistress Esposito will be interested. The architect was uh Chris Comar, who's most famous for the Casa Bonita. Up in Rogers Park.
All right, um we uh will now go back to uh the applicant uh for rebuttal. And then we will go uh to Alderman Kappelman.
Thank you. Um so I I'm gonna try and summarize a a handful of points in response to each of the uh objection objections that were made. The um statement was made that the curb cut along Wilson is um not not typical for the area. Neither is a curb cut along Dover. It's our understanding that the Dover curb cut is the only one on that block. And that is the more residential block. We we admit that and we we agree that that is the residential frontage. So for the interest of public convenience and also for the interest of of pedestrian safety. We're closing off or proposing to close off that driveway and relocate vehicle access to the Wilson Street side of the lot. The uh point was raised that we were looking at using the uh alley access for the garage. Unfortunately, there are existing infrastructure improvements for utility poles that don't allow us to do that. So we had to look at at another solution, and the solution was to locate the um again garage entry. Uh off of Wilson twenty-eight feet away from the alley. My uh second, uh with respect to the second objector, um it is uh I submit. um, it is, uh, I submitted zoning maps as well as additional sandborne maps and the plat maps to show and establish that the subject property is entirely outside the special purpose district. That's not to say that the surrounding landmark area didn't influence our design or have impact on, on, on our proposal, but we are one hundred percent outside of the landmark district and the special purpose districts. The second point I wanted to make is there was a, a discussion or a, a quote even from the special purpose district language, that the setbacks are supposed to be consistent. And what we've done is designed a fifteen-foot setback on the Dover Street side of the property that matches the three buildings immediately to the south of the subject site. That's being done in the interest of consistency. Um, with respect to, um, Mr. Tangura, um, I, I'll leave it to the board to review the photographs on what a three, four, or five-story building is, I don't want to have that argument. I would like to point out that Mr. Tangora's plat map is actually different from the plat map that was submitted with our findings and facts submitted. Mr. Tangora's plat map shows the lots with the building line, but it doesn't include the footprints of the buildings on those lots. And it's important for the board to consider that because forty-five thirty-seven North Dover, forty-five forty-three North Dover, forty-five forty-seven North Dover, all residential zone properties in the special purpose district in the historic designated area have a fifteen-foot front setback from Dover. And again, that's the exact dimension we're proposing to match with our setback on that side of the property. Again, Chairman, um, I, it, it hasn't been pulled up um, with the, uh, the plan set, but the maps, uh, that I'm referencing were included with our findings and facts submitted.
Alright, thank you, um. Before we go to Alderman Kappelman, are there any questions from the board commissioners? Okay, let's go to, uh, Alderman Kappelman. Uh, Alderman, uh, what would you like to say about this one?
Thank you, Chairman, I really appreciate it, um. So I'll say that this, this, uh, process has been two years in the making with, uh, many different community meetings, as, which has already been stated. Uh, it also has support from our local Chamber of Commerce, Uptown United, and I've also had extensive conversations about this project with DPD. Um, the input from the committee was great, and I believe that led to some uh, great suggestions and changes that were followed. Uh, Joanne Gannett, uh, spoke on behalf of Scott Adams, uh, he emailed me with a list of his concerns, and I responded to him and copied the developer in the process to make sure that there was good communication between the two, and, um, uh, the developer answered all of Scott's questions. Scott did not respond back, um, which gave me the impression that his concerns were addressed, this is the first time I'm hearing that, um, that he still had further questions, he, he did not communicate that to me. Um, I also, uh, have heard that there are some concerns about the height of this proposed building. Uh, one block east is thirteen twenty-five West Wilson, uh, and it's twelve stories. Um, uh, and we, we need a lot more, uh, units of housing, this is, uh, an area of the city where there is high demand, so there's a very low vacancy rate, that's why it, for me, it's so, so very important that we had this. Uh, I have, uh, weekly newsletters, and in my weekly newsletters, I encourage residents and, uh, uh, neighborhood organizations to contact me with any concerns they've had. Uh, I've been doing that for twelve years that I've been in office. Uh, none of the objectors today have ever contacted me or requested a meeting to discuss their concerns, uh, they're doing it here. Um, I, I believe that, um, uh, given that this, uh, current building is situated uh, in an area where there's a large asphalt, uh, parking lot that's underutilized, and given the extraordinary need we have for more apartment units, that it, it would be really good to have this, uh, development be approved, so I ask, um, for your approval of this, thank you so much.
Thank you very much, uh, are there any questions from the board before we take this matter under advisement?
Uh, this is Commissioner Esposito, we didn't really talk about, and, and maybe the Alderman is, is the right, uh, respondent for this. Um, is anybody concerned about the request to not have commercial on this commercial thoroughfare? Why, what are the current conditions that make you comfortable with this?
I can speak to that, I spoke to Uptown United about this very topic, and they, uh, uh, said that there is, um, a, a, a large number of vacant, uh, storefronts right now. Uh, right now, this particular building, there was a happy wash that's been vacant, I think, two years. There is a restaurant there, the owner lives in, in, I'm told, lives in Indiana and wants to move the restaurant closer to home. Um, so, so this is an area I believe, and, and also Uptown United believes that having more residents in the area would help the area businesses immensely.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board commissioners before we take this matter under advisement? Okay, we have what we need, we are going to take this matter under advisement, I want to thank everyone for their time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Um, Chairman, this is the reporter, I think you're on mute if you were speaking.
Thank you very much, I, I was speaking. Um, okay. I was, I was, I wasn't muted when I said that we were taking the matter under advisement, did I, was I? Okay, alright, good, alright, so next up, we are calling calendar numbers one fifty-six dash twenty-three dash S and one fifty-seven dash twenty-three dash S, this is eighteen fifty West Webster Avenue. If you're here in objection or support of this matter, please raise your hand and we will get you promoted. Star nine to raise your hand if you're on the phone, star six to unmute if you're on the phone. Good afternoon, Counselor Acosta.
Good afternoon.
Alright, um. See, there's a Charles Janifus. If you could unmute for a second?
Hello?
Hi, are you here in support or objection of this matter?
Are both of them together, both, um, uh, zone permits to drive through and the dispensary?
We're, we're hearing them, we're hearing them together.
Together, okay. Um, then I'd say four.
Oh, you're four, okay. Okay, um, alright, we, I'll, I will, well, here, I'll just, uh, let me, I'll get you sworn in right now, could you state your name and address, please?
Uh, twenty-two thirty-one Northwestern Unit C.
And your, your, your name?
Charles Janifus.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. Alright, let's go to the applicant's witnesses, do we have, uh, Daniel Pettigrew?
Yes.
Could you state your name and address, please?
Daniel Pettigrew, P E T T I G R E W, fifty-two thirteen South Kimbark, Chicago, Illinois, six zero six one five.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Louis Abuna? Can you state your name and address, please?
Yes, uh, Louis Abuna, A B O O N A, ninety-five seventy-five West Higgins Road in Rosemont, Illinois.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Uh, Peter Pulos, state your name and address, please?
Peter Pulos, offices at two thirty Westminster, Chicago, Illinois.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings? We didn't get an answer.
I do.
Thank you. Uh, Torren Lyons, if you could state your name and address, please?
Uh, address is going to be thirteen twenty-five Armor Boulevard, Bundeline, Illinois, six zero zero six zero.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes, sir.
Tim Gorman, can you state your name and address, please?
Yes, Tim Gorman, three eight five West on Wensia Road, Lake Forest, Illinois, six zero zero four five.
I apologize, Mr. Chairman, could you have him repeat that?
Could you repeat that, sir?
Sure, three eight five West on Wensia Road, Lake Forest, Illinois, six zero zero four five.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do.
Could you spell that street for the court reporter, too?
Yes, O N W E N S T I A.
Thank you. Uh, and, uh, Ken Nadolski, could you state your name and address, please?
Sure, Ken Nadolski, N A D O L S K I, addresses two six seven five Praydon Avenue, Hoffman Estates, Illinois, six zero one nine two.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Alright, um, Counselor Acosta, you have no objectors, you may proceed.
Good af- good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if you want to read the Department of Planning.
Oh, yes, I do, I do, no, let me do that now, thank you. Alright, this is the, uh, Department's recommendation for calendar number one fifty-six dash twenty-three dash S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed adult-use cannabis dispensary, provided, one, the special use is issued solely to the applicant, Ville Ops Inc. Two, all onsite customer queuing occurs within the building, and three, the development is consistent with the design and layout of the site plan dated April nineteen twenty twenty-three, floor plan and public access plans dated April twenty twenty twenty-three, and north and west elevations dated April fourteen twenty twenty-three, and south and east elevations dated April twenty twenty twenty-three, prepared by WT Group and landscape plan, landscape details and specifications dated April nineteen twenty twenty-three, prepared by Evergreen Design Group. And now, here's the recommendation for calendar number one fifty-seven dash twenty-three dash S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed drive-through facility to serve a proposed adult-use cannabis dispensary, provided one, the special use is issued solely to the applicants, Ville Ops Inc. And two, the development is consistent with the design and layout of the site plan dated April nineteen twenty twenty-three, floor plan and public access plans dated April twenty twenty twenty-three, and north and west elevations dated April fourteen twenty twenty-three, and south and east elevations dated April twenty twenty twenty-three, prepared by WT Group and Landscape Plan, Landscape Details and Specifications dated April nineteen twenty twenty-three, prepared by Evergreen Design Group. Uh, and Counselor, maybe I should just do this on the, um, the front end, just oh, oh, Nancy's got her hand raised, uh.
Yes, um.
Hi Nancy, how are you?
I'm doing well, how are you doing?
Good, good.
I, I wanted to go back to the recommendation for one fifty-six twenty-three S. Um, a- as you know, we read, we write a lot of standard conditions for cannabis dispensaries, particularly that all the customer queuing occurs within the building. Um, in this case, because there's a drive-through, um, application associated with it, um, I, I'm realizing as you're reading it that we should probably amend that condition to say all onsite non-vehicular customer queuing shall occur within the building.
Okay, okay, so, uh, so the, the recommendation will be amended on the record to reflect that all non-vehicular customer queuing uh, will occur within the building.
Right.
Okay, okay, um.
Chairman, then, oh. Chairman, sorry, this is Kamal, tech support, um, I, I did promote someone named Charles Janifus.
Yeah, he's been sworn in already.
Okay, okay.
Uh, okay, uh, Counselor Acosta, let me just, um, uh, address this with you on the front end, um, because, uh, do you a- acknowledge that, uh, currently the state does not permit drive-through dispensaries?
Yes, that, there's an exception, which is the current facility in Bundeline, but yes.
Okay, and so, so you understand that, that you can't actually, e- even if we were to grant the specialties with regard to the drive-through, you wouldn't be able to use it unless the state allows it?
Yes, the department actually, uh, you know, in, in conjunction with the Department of Law advised us of that, and we agree that there will be a condition that we cannot operate where you grant a special use until we get state approval to operate, and we intend to follow that condition.
Okay, excellent, alright, with that, uh, you have no objectors, uh, you do have one supporter, and you may proceed.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the site, as you see in this image, uh, some of you may recognize, because it used to be a state of Illinois emissions testing facility, and it contained four drive-through lanes, many of us went there to get our cars tested. Uh, it is currently vacant, the proposal before you has, is to reuse the existing approximately nine thousand square foot building uh, to have the dispensary on, on the site, close three of the existing drive-through lanes, and have the last one, uh, the westernmost one or closest to the railroad tracks, be a lane that is used for pre-ordered pickup, and that's important to understand that this is not like your traditional McDonald's drive-through where you order when you arrive. This lane will only be used by people who have pre-ordered and then are there solely to pick it up. Similar to, if you go to a Walgreens, for example, and have pre-established your prescription and just pick it up at a window. Uh, there is significant landscaping, you can, if you remember this image, when you see our site plan, you will see how much landscaping we have added to the site uh, to beautify the area and improve just the general experience. We have significant parking of thirty-seven parking spaces on the site. This site was rezoned in twenty twenty from an M three-three to a C two-three specifically, it was a type-one rezoning, specifically envisioning a future, uh, cannabis dispensary on-site. Uh, we also had our, our required community meeting, it was well-attended. Uh, as you can tell by the lack of objectors, we satisfied all of the concerns or questions that were raised at that meeting, and are pleased to be here to, uh, go through our plan. I'd like to start with Dan Pettigrew uh, as our first witness. Dan, are you here?
Yes, can you hear me?
Please, again, state your name and address for the record.
Dan Pettigrew, fifty-two thirteen South Kimbark, Chicago, Illinois.
And you are the chief executive officer, CEO of the applicant, correct?
Correct.
Uh, and although you're And although you're a Chicago native, you and Al Harrington started a cannabis business about ten years ago, but had to start it in Colorado, correct?
Correct, I had to travel to Colorado to engage in legal cannabis, the legal cannabis industry.
And so, this, this facility, which will be your first one in Chicago, is kind of a homecoming for you.
No, it's definitely an opportunity to come home, I'm unbelievably excited about it, I'm born and raised in the city, went to high school here, graduated from the city colleges. So the opportunity to bring this back to the city I'm from and I love is unbelievably exciting.
And just to be clear here, as we move along, because I know if no one else, remember, Toy always asked. Ville Ops, the applicant, is the tenant on the lease? Is that correct?
Yes.
And it's Ville Ops who will be operating this facility?
Correct.
And Ville Ops is part of what is known as, does business as Viola Brands, which is the company that you and Mr. Harrington started years ago. And you actually, you actually have some experience in the dispensary business, as well as general cannabis business. Because you operate a dispensary in Detroit, as I understand it, is that correct?
Correct, and we recently opened two in St. Louis as well.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You plan to have this dispensary operate Monday through Thursday from nine AM to eight PM? Friday and Saturday, nine AM to nine PM, and Sunday, nine to seven, correct?
Correct.
You anticipate that the single largest employee shift will be twenty employees?
Correct.
And you propose to obviously operate in accordance with all city and state requirements?
Correct.
And you believe it's been designed in a fashion to be efficient and protect public safety?
Yes, we do.
And notwithstanding your experience, you decided to further augment your experience. By soliciting the assistance of Green Thumb Industries, which I frequently will refer to as GTI. To give you some of their technical expertise, to make sure that this is a first-class safe facility, is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you. I want to move to Torren Lyons. Torren, please, when you have a chance, state your name and address for the record again.
Yes, sir, Torren Lyons, thirteen twenty-five Armour Boulevard, Bundeline, Illinois, six zero zero six zero.
And you are, you are the general manager of the Bundeline facility that's operated by GTI, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And that facility not only has a, what I'll call a regular dispensary, but it's the only one in Illinois that has a drive-in facility for pre-orders.
Yes, sir.
So you are familiar not only with the walk-in dispensary operations, but also the drive-in dispensary operations?
Yes, sir.
And you're familiar with the plan for this dispensary?
Yes, sir.
And you believe that this plan not only meets state requirements, but provides for safe and efficient operation?
Absolutely.
You anticipate. A large percent of your orders to be pre-orders?
Yes, sir, about fifty percent.
And that's consistent with the trends in the industry, right now? And you also have a large percentage of your customers who pay by debit card?
Yes, sir.
So the concern that once existed with large amounts of cash being held at dispensaries is no longer a concern?
No, sir.
And we have, you'll have a vault on the premises to maintain product and also currency, cash?
Yes, sir.
You expect deliveries to occur. Maybe one or tw- typically, once or twice a day?
Yes, sir.
And those would be pre-scheduled?
Yes, and they all have to be pre-scheduled.
And so you're aware that when a delivery is coming and can arrange for it?
What, can you repeat the question, sorry?
What, you're aware that a delivery is coming, and so you can arrange for its arrival? And secure the area?
Absolutely.
And specifically with the drive-through. It's, you have to preorder to use it?
Yes, yes, sir.
And when you preorder, you, you select a specific time slot to arrive at the facility to pick up your order?
Yes, sir.
And the customer will be, receive a text on their cellular phone. Advising them that their order is ready, and they can, they can proceed to the drive-through. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
They're also made aware of the rules with respect to accessing the drive-through.
Yes, sir.
And so, when one arrives, the first thing that will happen is before they enter the lane, they will be verified that they're authorized to enter.
Yes, sir.
And then that will be, once again, rechecked when they enter the dispensing area, the drive-through lane.
Yes, sir, at the, at the moment of dispensing, they will check again.
And that's where the transaction will occur. You'll have mobile devices where people can sort of do the transaction.
Yep, you'll be able to do all the transaction in the garage.
And so, and you anticipate, based on your experience, that there will be approximately twenty or so. Drug pickup, vehicular pickup. Through the drive-through per hour.
I would say yes, fifteen to twenty, yes, sir.
And you'll monitor all these operations using your computer system. To make sure that everything is operating, operating efficiently, you'll minimize, to minimize queuing. And certainly to maintain safety, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Then you'll adjust, it'll be adjusted as necessary.
We'll adjust as needed, yes, sir.
And I forgot this with Mr. Pettigrew, so I'm going to have to go back to him in a second, Mr. Chairman, but. I, we worked on an affidavit with respect to both of the special uses, you've reviewed the affidavit. You signed the affidavit, and if you were to continue to testify, would your testimony be consistent with that, those affidavits?
Yes, it would.
Oh, that was actually for Torren, but, but.
Yes, sir.
Now, I'm going to go back to Dan, and I think, Dan, you need to state your name again, so that the court reporter knows it's you.
I apologize, Dan Pettigrew.
And you, I also worked on affidavits with you, and you reviewed them and executed them, and if you were continuing to testify today, would your testimony be consistent with those affidavits?
Yes, it would.
Thank you, both of you. Moving along to Tim Gorman, Gorman, sorry? Please state your name and address for the record.
Tim Gorman, three eight five West on Wensia Road, O N W E N S T I A, Lake Forest, Illinois, six zero zero four five.
Thank you. You are the Vice President of Asset Protection for GTI?
Correct.
And you're here to sort of provide technical security experience to Dan's future operation, is that correct?
Correct, I have expertise in safety, security, and compliance.
And how did you develop that expertise?
I have twenty-seven years of security and retail expertise, primarily twenty-two years at Walgreens. Where I served as the Vice President of Asset Protection, responsible for the enterprise.
And that enterprise has some, during your time there, had some eight thousand stores, is that correct? Including many with pickup windows?
Correct.
So not dissimilar to this operation. That's proposed here. Although, probably this has a lot more security than your typical drive, drive-up Walgreens window.
Absolutely, an immense amount of security and proactive deterrence.
And you're familiar with the entire facility and believe it to be safe?
I am.
Meeting all state requirements?
Correct.
Consistent with best practices?
Yes.
And that includes the, the drive-through lane and operations?
Yes.
And we worked on an affidavit, affidavit for each special use, that summarized your testimony, and if you were to continue to testify today, would your testimony be consistent with those affidavits?
Yes, I would.
Thank you. Moving to Ken Nadolski?
Yes.
State your name and address for the record, please.
Ken Nadolski, two six seven five Praydon Avenue, Hoffman Estates, Illinois, six zero one nine two.
You're an Illinois licensed architect, correct?
Yes, sir.
And you've supervised the design of the proposed facility?
I have.
And you believe that it complies with the Chicago Building Code?
Yes.
You also believe it will meet state requirements for a cannabis facility?
Yes.
And because of the reuse of the site plan and the significant addition of landscaping. You believe that it will be compatible with the Navy, the neighborhood?
I do.
And also significantly improve pedestrian safety and comfort?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. And we worked on an affidavit that summarized your testimony in both of these matters. And you reviewed that affidavit and executed it, and if you were to testify today, continue testifying today, would your testimony be consistent with that affidavit, those affidavits?
Yes.
Thank you. Louis Abuna?
Yes, sir.
Name and address for the record.
Yes, Louis Abuna, Principal of KLAO A ninety-five seventy-five West Higgins Road in Rosemont.
And you have many years as a traffic expert?
Yes, I have.
Mr. Chairman, I believe Mr. Abuna has testified many times before the board and would ask that he be recognized as an expert?
The board recognizes his expertise.
Thank you, you performed a study. To review this facility in terms of traffic impact, is that correct?
That is correct.
And included in your study was the proposed drive-through facility?
That is correct.
And you found that there would be no negative traffic impacts from the proposed dispensary?
That is correct.
You summarized all of your findings and all of your data in a report, is that correct?
Yes.
Which report was submitted to the city?
Yes.
And has been reviewed, and you have not received any comments with respect to your report?
Correct.
And if you were to further testify today, your testimony would be consistent with that report?
Yes, it will be.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Peter Pulos, please?
Good afternoon.
Peter, you are, state your name and address for the record.
Peter Pulos, offices at two thirty West Monroe, Suite twenty-one twenty-five, Chicago, Illinois.
And you're an MAI appraiser, correct?
That's correct.
Mr. Chairman, just like Mr. Abuna, he has testified many times before this board, I would ask that you recognize him as an expert.
Yes, the board recognizes his expertise.
And you, you, you reviewed this site and the proposed facility?
Yes, I have.
And you, you found that it met all of the standards for approval as a special use?
That's correct.
You summarized your findings in a report, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Which, which report has been submitted and made part of the record in this case?
Yes.
And you, in those findings, you found no adverse impacts? Including adverse, no adverse impacts to property values, is that correct?
That is correct.
And you found that due to the limited number of licenses issued by the state and the significant population in the area. This dispensary would be in the interest of the public convenience, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And if you were to continue testifying today, your testimony would be consistent with that report?
Yes, it would.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes our case in chief, and we are happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Are there any questions from the board? Let's go to Charles Jonathan. Charles?
Hi, my name's Charles Jonathan, I was at the in-person committee meeting, and there were comments brought up about the exit of the dispensary on Lister Avenue. On the east side of the bill, on the east side of the plot. There were concerns about potentially closing that because of the increase in traffic flow down the residential side street. From what I hear in the beginning, that closure to that exit has not been changed?
We, we have not closed the, the entrance or that exit, what we have done, because we reviewed that particular driveway. And it was found that it was useful for those headed southbound to get to the four-way stop sign if they wanted to go eastbound on Webster. But we have added signage. That indicates that you should not make a left turn out of that exit.
Okay, but people can go into that entrance if they're heading down Lister Avenue from either direction?
Yes. Yes, if you're coming southbound on Lister, you could enter that, make a right turn into that entrance. And if you wanted to, you could make a right at the, at the stop sign, the four-way stop sign of Lister and Webster, and then make a left. Probably, and I think Mr. Abuna would say, most of those entering from Webster will proceed past the stop sign and make the right turn in on Webster.
Okay, because I was concerned about the backflow of traffic, one, coming from, if you're heading south on Damon. Damon is a one-lane street, so if you're going to make a left-hand turn down Lister. From going south on Damon, that's going to cause like a backflow of traffic all the way back to Fullerton. Since if, during like rush hour, which you said was going to be the biggest time of the day for traffic. Could potentially back up Damon and then cause more traffic around that way? Is it possible that we could work on closing that with like follow-up studies?
We can certainly monitor it, we've raised the concern specifically with Mr. Abuna and with CDAT. And they didn't think we'd have sufficient traffic to cause any issues here, basically because. The predominant direction of flow would be south to Webster for those who know the area. Rather than Lister. But certainly, we can monitor it, and it becomes a problem, you know, as Dan said at our community meeting. He doesn't hide, he's around, he's available, and then we can work on some solutions.
Okay, was there like a threshold for that traffic study of how many cars per hour would be considered a problem?
That I would have to turn it to Mr. Abuna.
Yes, so, wasn't necessarily a threshold, but I mean, we looked at. The peak hour traffic that will be generated by the dispensary and overlay that on the peak hour of traffic on the street system. And while we, you know, we will expect some traffic to come down Lister Avenue from Damon, we did look at that intersection. And based on the existing traffic, as well as the minimal amount of traffic that the dispensary will add, it's not really going to change. Any materially, the, the operations of that intersection, and that was all spelled out in the, in the study that we did.
Okay. I just, because this is the first drive-through in downtown Chicago, one of the biggest parking lots that I've seen of all the other dispensaries. I was just concerned about like the study being underpowered compared to like. Being in a city like it's nine months of winter, I'm sure the drive-throughs can be very popular. I just don't want that overflow of traffic for the drive-through lane to curve around that exit onto Lister and then back up. That street because Lister is only like one and a half cars wide. So like if there was overflow back out onto Lister. Cars would not be able to go up and down the street, versus if the only enter, entrance and exit was on Webster. That would provide, that's which has two lanes for each direction, that would provide more flow for traffic.
I mean, again, the drive-through is really just a pickup lane, and you know, be based on pre-orders. And will be regulated in terms of how much with traffic will use it, and you know, and there's plenty of stacking that is going to be provided, so we don't anticipate any, any of that traffic to back up on, on to Lister at all.
And if I, if I may, you can see the distance and how many, we, we just pointed out around the building, we don't expect that, we don't ever expect more than maybe a few cars. But we wanted to show how many cars could fit, and then we have the entire drive aisle before you get to Lister. And with respect to the parking lot. It's way more parking that we really need for the dispensary, but it's there, so we might as well make it available.
Understood, yeah, I'm all for it, but I just want to make sure it's done in the most efficient way, because. Traffic is, is bad enough as it is with the Kennedy and all of this stuff, so just. To mitigate any kind of, you know, additional traffic to the neighborhood is just the consideration I was just bringing to the table.
Sure, and we've closed, there's a northern driveway that exists today that we have closed.
Correct, yeah, on the, yeah, on the far side, yes, that is correct.
Okay, so, so, Charles, just to be clear, you, you're still in support of this project, Charles?
I'll just defer my vote.
Okay, you're neutral?
Neutral, I'll just go neutral.
Okay. 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 Any questions from the board before we take this matter under advisement? Okay, we will take this matter under advisement.
Thank you very much, have a great evening and a great weekend.
Thank you. All right. Next up. Is calendar number one fifty-eight dash twenty-three dash S. This is thirty-three forty North Halsted. If you're here in objection or support of this matter, please raise your hand and we will get you promoted. So, star nine to raise your hand if you're on the phone. Star six to unmute if you're on the phone.
Hello?
Yes.
Oh, good, oh, good.
Who's, who's speaking?
Chairman Sanchez, I'm the, uh, project attorney, would you like me to begin?
Uh, let me get your witnesses sworn first.
That would be wonderful, thank you.
Yes, uh, Edie, uh, if you could state your name and address, please?
Yes, good afternoon, my name is Edie Moore. That's E-D-I-E-M-O-O-R-E. I'm seven zero one one South Clyde Avenue in Chicago.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. Uh, Timothy, if you could state your name and address, please?
Certainly, uh, Timothy Levon, L-E-V-A-U-G-H-N, uh, four one six West Surf Street, Chicago, six oh six one four.
Do you swear? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. Uh. Abe Jamal, if you could state your name and address, please?
That's, uh, Abraham Jamal. Three one six Cronin Boulevard, Shorewood, Illinois, six oh four oh four.
I'm so sorry, Mister Chairman, could you have him repeat that one more time?
Yeah, maybe slow down a little bit with the address.
Uh, my, my apologies, Mister Chairman, uh, three one six. And that's Cronin, C-R-O-N-I-N. Uh, Boulevard, and that's in Shorewood, Illinois, six oh four oh four.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do.
Thank you, uh, Michael, if you could state your name and address, please?
Mike Wollin, nineteen ten First Street in Highland Park.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do, sir.
Thank you. And then do we have, uh, Kevin?
Uh, yes, Kevin Hosworth, four two two one North Cunmore, Chicago, six oh six one three.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you, let me just scan here to see if we have any objectors. I'm not seeing any, Counselor, you may proceed.
Thank you so much, uh, Chairman Sanchez, uh, members of the Zoning Board of Appeals. It has been a long road, a long day, but also a long road getting to this moment. And we are so happy to be here and so grateful for your consideration. Uh, my name is Danielle Meltzer Castle, I'm a zoning attorney. I'm the project, uh, zoning attorney, uh, for this matter. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Cap JG LLC. I practice at the law firm of Vetter Price PC, two twenty-two North LaSalle Street, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six oh one.
Counselor, uh, let me just jump in real quick and, uh, read the department's recommendation.
Yes, please, thank you.
Okay, this is the recommendation for calendar number one fifty-eight dash twenty-three dash S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed adult-use cannabis dispensary. Provided, one, the special use is issued solely to the applicant. Oh wait, we got a typo here.
We have a typo.
Yeah. Um, all right, so, uh, sh- I should just read the correct, uh, applicant, correct, right, Nancy?
Yes.
Okay, so, right of the special use is issued solely to the applicant. Uh, Cap dash JG LLC. Uh, two, all onsite customer queuing occurs within the building. And three, the development is consistent with the design and layout of the site and landscape plan. Dated February fifteen, twenty twenty-three, and space plan and access diagram and elevations dated April eleven, twenty twenty-three. Prepared by Interform Architecture Plus Design, or and Design, and Delivery Maneuver slash Maneuvering Plans. Two sheets dated January fifth, twenty twenty-three, prepared by RTM Engineering Consultants. Um, so just for the record, uh, the, uh, the, the, the recommendation just, uh, has the, uh, the, the wrong applicant. But, uh, we're amending it on the record to reflect the correct applicant, which is Cap, uh, dash JG LLC.
Excellent, thank you so much, and we really appreciate that support. Um, I believe we have no issues whatsoever with those conditions, other than the one about there being absolutely no pedestrian queuing. Um, and I think as we flesh out the case, I'm hoping, um, that we can have some dialogue about potentially modifying that one. So, um, as the, uh, agenda states and the staff report states, the applicant is seeking a special use. For an adult-use cannabis dispensary at thirty-three forty North Halsted Street. And for the aerial map that we have on, on our screen, it is basically a standard City of Chicago lot. Uh, quite unlike the prior case you just heard, it's basically a twenty-five by one twenty-five foot standard lot. The single-story building, historically, it's been a tavern, longtime tavern called Town Hall Pub. Um, we have, uh, thank you, we have commercial uses along, uh, Halsted on, on both sides of the street at the ground floor. And residential, somewhat new development, um, a mix of new and historic development, but, uh, residential on upper floors. And I think we're delighted that this site became available, um, because we're going to be able to preserve this very, uh. Special little building, um. The lot will not go to a mixed-use multi-story redevelopment that would block light and air for the buildings to the north and south of us. There's our rear elevation, the alley, this is another thing that made the site great for us. Um, we're going to be able to adapt that rear entrance and have all of our deliveries. Um, into a roughly three hundred square foot garage at the rear. Um, so all product deliveries will take place there, and I assume we'll get our, our floor plans up at some point. But we also included with our application, with our findings of fact. Uh, turning diagrams that civil engineer prepared showing that the, um, uh. Truck size that we anticipate for product deliveries will be able to maneuver in and out of that internal garage. And some of the, the, uh, photos that are on the screen right now. Um, these are actually some of the nicer ones. If we went, uh, further into the, the photo bank that we provided with our application, you'll see that. The property, the interior of the property is actually quite, quite rundown. Um, has had a lot of, uh, deferred maintenance and. Uh, on that note, I, I want to say the applicants are, this is a labor of love. And they are going to be spending considerable capital dollars to renovate this facility. Um, yes, there's our survey, and you can see why we will have no onsite parking, besides the fact that no onsite parking is required per zoning code. We're essentially, uh, building lot line to lot line, we have our two little recesses, you can see on the Halsted. Side, that would be our east facade. And one of the other nice things you'll see when we get to our floor plan is we're going to be able to have separate customer entrances and exits. They will enter at the north recessed doorway, they will exit at the south recessed doorway. And another thing, yeah, oh, I'm sorry, if you could go back to the last slide with the survey, one of the, the, the nice things is. The building doesn't extend all the way to our rear property line, we have about a three-foot apron. And that's going to make all the difference for the truck turning radius. I think we were going next to the, great, thank you so much. Um, so, e- essentially, we're going to make use of every square inch of this, uh, standard City of Chicago lot in this existing building. Um, customers will enter from Halsted into a, uh, screening and entry area where they'll be professionally screened. In accordance with all, uh, State of Illinois requirements. Presuming they are of age, um, and meet all the criteria for entry, they will, um, proceed into the sales area. In accordance with the Cannabis Regulation Act, there will be absolutely no product on display, only empty, um. Uh, packaging will have multiple points of sale, uh, including, um. One register where we can have, uh, a wheelchair-bound, um. Uh, salesperson. Uh, we'll also have an ATM and a bathroom that's accessible, uh, for customers. But beyond that, the entire west half of the site. Uh, of the building, of its interior, will be off limits to all customers. It's where all of the, oh, thank you so much, so green shows you our entrance area. That teal or aqua area shows you where customers will, um, be able, uh, to access that, um. Uh, you can also see their exit, their separate exit out to Halsted. And then the salmon-colored, uh, rear of the site is where we will have our secure vault. And loading area and, um, our safe for cash, our room where our video, um, moni- uh, video surveillance cameras will be monitored. A break room for employees and generally all of the back of house. That's required, um, to operate an adult-use cannabis dispensary in accordance with all state requirements. And, uh, before I turn to the witnesses, I'll just note that if you see those three white squares inside of our loading area. We are also committed to keeping all of our, um, trash and refuse. Um, it, on the interior of the site, so we won't be clogging up the alley and also will be, again, in compliance with all state requirements. I will note, we, we don't have any objectors, I'm very proud of that, I think that's a result of. Many years of us working on this and trying to work in a really collaborative way. Oh, that screen we have right now shows those truck turning movements. Um, we also all note have a, a variety, a number and a variety of support letters. From elected officials, from business associations, from residential neighbors. Um, we're really proud of that, um, we think we went above and beyond, um, the legal requirements for notice and community engagement. And, oh, there's our, our facade, um, both rear and, um, front elevation. And I, I, as long as we have these up, I, I do want to highlight two things. In one of our many, many consultations with both Alderman Tunny and Alderman-elect, um, Ben Lawson. They rec- um, you know, we were constantly incorporating ideas they had. One of them, they did ask us on the alley elevation to have a no loitering sign, which we will have. But in accordance with staff's, um, requests, we removed all signage from these elevations. Um, and then on the front facade, besides us generally, um, repairing, restoring, refreshing it. I do want to note that this is on a pedestrian street. The pedestrian guidelines would like as much transparency as possible. Um, however, we also have competing state regulations that want to control the amount of visibility into the dispensaries. I believe the way, when we get to the permitting stage, this, these will meet in the middle. Is that if you went back to the photo of existing conditions, I think that the Town Hall Pub facade was essentially illegal non-conformity on the pedestrian street. We are, um, expanding, um, the gla- yes, thank you so much. So, we will have, um, more of a window opening. With our renovations. So we certainly won't be worsening that non-conformity. Um, on the other hand, uh, we will be having security, um, film and glazing for, for safety. Um, Mister Chairman, if it's okay with you, I'll just identify the wonderfulnesses we have and, um. Briefly just establish that their testimony would be consistent with the affidavits they provided?
Yep, and I think, um, that, uh, you probably, if you're, if you're looking to, uh. You know, make an exception to the, to the recommendations that were, um, provided by the Department of Plan and Development, you'll have to go into detail.
I will.
Okay.
I will for sure, thank you for pointing that out. Okay, I would love to begin with Edie. Edie? I think you're on mute, oh, good, now you're off mute. Hello?
Hey, Danielle.
Would you please restate your name and your business address, uh, for the record?
Edie Moore. E-D-I-E-M-O-O-R-E, seven zero one one South Clyde, C-L-Y-D-E Avenue.
Thank you so much, and did you execute the affidavit that was included with our proposed findings of fact?
I did.
And if I asked you to testify to the statements, um, in that affidavit, would your testimony be consistent with the affidavit?
It would.
Thank you, thank you. Um, Edie? Would you mind describing, um, some of the mechanisms that we are going to use to limit queuing outside of the property? And if you'd prefer me to list them and have you answer yes or no, I'm happy to do that as well.
Um, now I can start, and you can correct me if I'm, if it's inconsistent. Um, yeah, so we have a, a, a pretty sizable waiting room. Um, and we're establishing SOPs to, uh, make sure that we are, um, that our staff knows how to, um. Review the, the IDs and, and get people through quickly. So it's a, it's an interior waiting room, and then there's, uh, queuing available inside.
And you said by SOPs, you mean standard operating procedures?
Yes.
And is it true that you're going to implement, um, essentially online pre-orders?
Yes, absolutely, um, yeah, we'll be doing pre-orders and transactions are only about, uh, three minutes per order.
Thank you, and, um, do you anticipate that the online pre-ordering will be consistent with having customers? On-site for such short amounts of time?
Absolutely, that's correct.
Thank you, and, um, would you also say that having up to five registers active? It, as shown in our floor plan, all active at the same time, um, for hours in which we have a lot of customer attendance. Will, um, reduce, uh, again, transaction time and reduce the need for there to be any queuing outdoors?
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you, and are we also going to implement a pager system? So that people who do not order until they arrive will be asked to go and explore the neighborhood? And will be buzzed when their order is ready for pickup?
That's correct.
Thank you, and, um, my understanding, it, please correct me if I'm wrong, is that all of our display. Um, fixtures, they won't really be fixtures, um, all of our display furniture, um, in the sales area will be movable. So we can bring it to the perimeter and use the entire sales area, um, floor for setting up stanchions and having internal queuing. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you, and are we also going to have, um, security and non-security personnel regularly going to the, um, sidewalk areas? To discourage queuing, um, and, you know, asking people to come back when there isn't a line?
That's correct.
Thank you very much, um, we are going to have, I'm going to have more queuing-related questions for Kevin in a moment. Um, but then I'd also, let me, let me stay with you, Edie, for just a moment or, or two more to say. Isn't it correct that under the cannabis, the Illinois Cannabis Regulation Act, that our hours of operation could be as long as six AM to ten PM every day?
That is correct.
And, um, is it your plan as, um, part-owner, um, of the applicant? To extend the hours? Um. You know, up to that maximum that's allowed in order to meet customer demand and not create, um, a, a. A situation where customers come and have to wait long times?
Yes, absolutely, if that is what the, um, if that is what the, uh, the neighborhood, uh, demands, that's correct.
Yeah, well, what the customers demand.
What the, well, what the, yeah, what the customers demand, we don't want to stay open longer than what the, the neighbors. What the, well, what the, yeah, what the customers demand. We don't wanna stay open longer than what the, the neighbors would like as well.
Okay, thank you. Um, those are my only questions for you at this time. There may be more questions for you from. The members of the zoning board. Um, Mr. Chairman.
I'll jump in with a question just right.
Sure.
As far as the uh, the inside customer queuing, what's the maximum capacity for, for, how many people can be queued?
The maximum number by building code is um twenty four persons. That space is six hundred and ninety-three square feet. And Tim is also here to testify as the project architect from Interform. And then we have a queuing area for an additional twelve people in the. Um, secure waiting area under um according to the Interform drawings.
Okay, so the, so twenty-four plus twelve?
Yes, thirty-six, thirty-six people.
Okay, and that uh, how, how mu- how many staff are gonna be? Are, are we just talking about customers or do those numbers include staff too?
Um, can, Tim, can I ask you to uh, well, unmute yourself? And then we'll have you state your name and address for the record and have you respond to the chairman's. Um, question. So let's start with your name and business address for the record.
Sure, again, it's Timothy, last name is Levon, L E V like Victor, A U G H N. Uh, and my address is uh four one six West Surf Street, Chicago, six oh six five seven.
And Tim, I'm looking at the drawing that is on the screen right now. Interform labeled the, the teal area, sales floor as six ninety-three. To the left of that point of sale is um a hundred and seventy-four square feet. The five stations where the salespeople would be sitting. Is that included in your twenty-four persons capacity for the sales area? Or is that included in the point of sale area?
Uh, you know, Danielle, I don't have that right in front of you right now. I believe it's included in the overall uh capacity. Um, but I might need to get clarity on that.
Okay, well, my, my understanding um and maybe Edie or Kevin want to testify to this. We were on many planning calls um that Tim was not with other people from Interform and my.
We, we would, we would need to subtract staff from that. They'd be on the floor with tablets, taking orders that way. Um, at that, in that uh green area that you mentioned before, there's only one um. To two people at that desk. And the rest is available for queuing. So you would subtract staff from that. There, most of the staff would be on the floor. Or um, working in the other areas.
So another way that queuing will be reduced will be by having salespeople. Um, with tablets in the teal colored area on the sales floor.
Okay, but let me just, let me just see here. So um, so in the, in the, in the green reception area here, we're talking about having two staff. And that's gonna take away from the um, what, the, the twelve that can be in there? Is that, is that correct?
No, those two staff members will be at that desk. Um, checking uh register, you know, checking people in.
And what's the, and again, what's the um, the, the, the capacity for that room?
Danielle, what'd you say it was? Twenty-four?
No, according to Interform, the waiting area capacity is twelve persons.
Okay, and so that's twelve, but that would in, but you gotta subtract the two people that you've got. So you got ten.
Right.
I believe that's actually twelve customers and, and not uh including the sales staff.
And what's that based on?
Uh, that's based on the square footage.
So you don't account for the other people that are gonna be in the room? That doesn't sound right to me.
It'd be ten people that waiting area and then there's uh, then there's room for queuing. On the teal part of the floor.
Right, there's twenty-four there and how many uh, how many employees are gonna be on that floor?
Well, that would depend on, on traffic flow. We have five POS stations. So we would have people beyond, beyond, mm, behind the POS. Um, but then we. As ma- as many as two.
Additional with tablets on the floor?
That's, yes.
Okay, so seven total uh in a busy time. You'd have five at the, at the, at the, at the POS and then. Two with tablets?
Yes.
Okay.
But the, yeah, I do believe that those five stations and the point of sale. Um, clerks are, would not be deducted from the twenty-four persons because they would not.
They're red, yes.
Six hundred and ninety-three square feet.
Okay, cuz they're in the restricted access.
Yo, back office, correct.
Okay, okay. Okay, so two people then with tablets on, on the floor uh i- in the, on the sales floor.
Correct.
So then, and that's a, the, the capacity there's twenty-four, so you could have twenty-two customers and, and, and two uh, uh. Uh, employees with tablets.
Absolutely, and three to, three to five minute transactions.
Okay, okay, I understand now. Thank you. Continue.
I'm sorry if that had been unclear. Um, can I, I, if it's all right uh with you, Mr. Chairman? I would go to Kevin Houseworth.
Okay.
Kevin, are you unmuted? Oh, good, you are. Um, would you please state your name and business address for the record?
Kevin Houseworth, four two two one North Kenmore, Chicago.
Thank you. And are you a part owner of the applicant entity?
Yes.
And did you execute the affidavit that um is included in our findings of fact?
Yes.
Thank you. And if you were asked to testify to the statements that are in the affidavit, would your testimony be consistent? With the affidavit?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, Kevin, I wanna talk to you uh about two quick things on, on. Neighborhood, neighborhood impact really and, and related to queuing. First, um, is it correct that you? Um, we're not only at our March twenty-first, um, sorry, uh, our um. Sorry about that. March thirteenth community meeting. But also that you met separately on March ninth uh with the North Halsted Business Alliance. And you also met on March twenty-first with the Heart of Lakeview Community Group.
That's correct.
And is it also true that this project has been developed? Um, over multiple years and with multiple meetings with Alderman Tunny. And his chief of staff, Bennett Lawson, who is now the Alderman Elect.
Yes.
And in your involvement in all of these community meetings and Aldermanic meetings and. You were also named as a person in our notice uh letter, which went to hundreds of people. Have you heard any objections or neighbor concerns about pedestrian queuing? That you think were, remain unaddressed by our operational plans?
Any questions that were brought up um in terms of queuing and any other operational uh. Uh, suggestions um were, in my opinion, very much adequately addressed and those organizations that you named have submitted. Uh, letters of support for this project.
And then because you are so familiar with this neighborhood, could you describe? Some of the other businesses on both sides of Halsted on this block? And how they operate in terms of queuing? Because this is an entertainment district.
That's right. So um, this being an entertainment district, um, many of the. Uh, our neighboring establishments, our bars, uh, our nightclubs, um, there's some restaurants. So one of the questions that was brought up was also queuing around um, around festivals and block parties. Um, Market Days, Pride Fest, things of that nature. Um, the neighborhood assoc- the neighborhood business association works very collaboratively. Um, because during those festival periods, queuing is something that impacts all businesses on the street and they work collaboratively to, to address. Um, one of the challenges is during those festival weekends is the. Um, making, ensuring that we're not blocking any entrances to any other businesses. Um, we're fortunate that to our south, we have quite a long pathway. Um, um, uh, the, to avoid blocking any other entrances. Um, and then additional security is provided both by the. Um, by the business associations as well as the individual businesses to help uh ensure that queues are managed. Um, during non-festival periods, um, this being a re- uh resident, uh, largely of, uh, an entertainment district and a business district. There's actually great enthusiasm around the increase in pedestrian traffic um to support other neighboring businesses. So as was mentioned earlier, um, we will be through marketing, through communications, through education of our customers. Encouraging folks to order online, um, to do pre-orders, um, and to what Edie and others have stated. Um, instead of waiting in line, they'll get a text message or an alert that their order is ready. Um, and the local business, several local businesses have expressed. Um, enthusiasm around customers being encouraged to walk the neighborhood and explore. Some of those other support and support, some of those other local businesses.
So Chairman Sanchez and, and Nancy, if, if I could put something forward. We're deeply, deeply committed to being a great neighbor, one that activates the, the. Street and keeps this corridor lively um and doesn't in. You know, really supports rather than, you know, damages the operations of other businesses. But I just don't think it's realistic to say that we would have absolutely no queuing ever. And that all queuing would occur indoors. So I'm wondering if we can find a way. To say, you know, we will absolutely operate in the manner that we described in our application. To minimize queuing, but I don't think we can eliminate it entirely. And I, I don't think. The major businesses in this street, particularly. You know, businesses like, like Sidetrack, which is across the street and is owned by some of our members, Arthur Johnston. Um, and Jose Pena, who would have been here tonight, but they are in Europe. Um, they, you know, that is a business, it is such a success that it does have queuing. Um, it's part of the life of the street. Um, so I, I'm eager to hear your guys' thoughts about that.
I mean, I'll, I'll let, I'll let Nancy, you know, speak for DPD, but I, but I'll say something first. I mean, typically. You know, these kind of conversations happen with DPD before uh the applicant comes before the zoning board of appeals. Uh, and, and, and before the recommendation is written. Um, because right now I think what we're hearing is you can't comply with the DPD recommendation is written. Um, which is something that should have been addressed with DPD before today. Um, because, you know, the other thing too is that I don't believe we've approved any. Cannabis dispensary that allowed queuing outdoors. So this is, this would be. Uh, the, the first exception to that rule that, that uh we've had in place. Um, but you know, with, with, with that said, Nancy, do you wanna weigh in here?
E- excuse me, Chairman, may I? May I?
Why don't we let Nancy go first, Edie, and then, then?
This is um, this is a special use and, and Chairman, you and I were thinking the same thing. I, while when that first came up, I, I. Sent a note over to, to Victor to confirm that no other special uses for cannabis dispensaries have. Have asked for or gotten a uh waiver from that provision. Um, the reasons we include those in there is, is a couple. Um, when we're looking at. The special use criteria, specifically what we look at is, is. Is it in the interest of the public convenience and will not have a significant adverse impact on the general welfare of the neighborhood and community? Regardless of whether or not other businesses might have people queuing outside is, is irrelevant to the special use application. What we need to do is make sure that we're looking at this special use application. So having the queue outside does impact. Um, two aspects of the, the special use criteria, um, the impact in the welfare of the community by, by. Um, narrowing down the narrow, already narrow sidewalks along that, that street. And that, and that also doesn't promote pedestrian safety and comfort. Um, it is a standard condition that, and I've gone back while, while I was listening, I went back. It's been a standard condition as part of all of our special use criteria. So, you know, I think there's, there's um. There's also some consideration to, you know, those state standards of, of making sure everything's safe. You know, they make sure you put the, the. The, the, the tinted um, um. Film on the windows and make sure everything's safe. Um, so making sure that people aren't congregating outside, I think helps reinforce that. Um, so I, I would say just from DPD standpoint, there's, there's really not been a. Um, a history of anyone deviating that and it, and seeking relief from that doesn't seem to, to meet with the special use criteria.
Edie, did you want, uh, Chairman Sanchez, is it all right if Edie speaks? I know she wanted to.
You know, I, I think um, she, she'll be able to speak, but I, I, I think, you know, I still. Have some questions, you know, eh, have you, eh, has, has the applicant run any models about? You know, how many people you're anticipating per hour, per day? You know, what are your, have you, you know? Kind of figured out what your peak times are gonna be and, and what kind of uh, uh. What kind of rush you're gonna have when people come? I mean, it seems like you've considered it because you're considering that you're not gonna have enough space. Uh, uh, inside the premises to, to handle all the customers. So what's the basis of that? How did you? Determine that you're gonna need customer queuing outside?
We actually have not determined that we need that, um, Chairman, but we have. Um, and we haven't done the models of how many people will be coming at what peak times and things like that. That's something that we would have to. Um, figure as we go on or how, you know, as, um, as we get open. But what we have figured out is how long it takes to. Um, conduct a transaction. So it takes three to seven minutes to conduct a transaction. The things that we've put in place are pre-orders and tablets for people to um. To get their orders done quickly. So those are the things that we have um, put in place now and then we can adjust. Um, oh, and also the pager system. Um, and we can adjust once we know what our peak times will be. Uh, but we will absolutely agree to no queuing outside.
Yes, we're, if we can retract.
Need to ask.
Yeah, we, we can retract our suggestion that that not be an explicit condition. That's, that's fine.
Okay, okay. Um, okay, uh, did you, do you still have some witnesses you need to put on?
Um, if the, if the chairman feels like it would be helpful, um, I could have um. Tim testify further, I would like.
You need to put on uh.
I have to put my on.
Yeah.
For sure, for sure. Let me, let me just very quickly, Abe. If you can unmute yourself, please state your name, business address for the record.
Absolutely. Uh, Abraham Jamal, uh, three one six Cronin, C R O N I N Boulevard. And that's in Sherwood, Illinois, six oh four oh four.
Thank you very much. And did you execute the affidavit that is included with the findings of fact?
I did.
Thank you. And if you were asked to testify today um regarding the subject matter of the affidavit, would your testimony be consistent? With what stated in, in the affidavit?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. I'll just highlight a couple of things very quickly. Is it true? The applicant has retained Sapphire Risk Advisory to oversee the development of uh, security designs. Processes, policies, and procedures for the proposed dispensary?
Yes.
And true that you're a consultant engaged by Sapphire to implement, actually implement the engagement?
Correct.
That you're, do you have reviewed and you're familiar with the subject property?
Yes.
And that you're at, um, actively working with the applicant to develop these procedures?
Yes.
And that in accordance with the um, uh, applicable state laws and regulations, there will be a full-time. And that in accordance with the, um, uh, applicable state laws and regulations, there will be a full-time security manager. At the dispensary and that the security manager will oversee responses to. Any local state or national emergencies, including natural disasters that would affect dispensary security or operations?
Correct.
And that the security manager will also coordinate with local law enforcement agencies. And you have already met with the local police district to begin discussing, um, among other things. Um, sidewalk operations and, or sidewalk impacts and, and, uh, in-store operations.
Correct.
And is it also true that in the protocols and procedures that you're developing? That security personnel will patrol the exterior areas of the site? And discourage any outdoor loitering or blockage of the Halsted Street sidewalks?
Correct.
Thank you very much. Nothing further for you, though the members of the board may have questions for you as well. And last but not least, Michael Wallen, hello.
Hello.
Hello. Would you please state your name and address for the record?
My name is Mike Wallen, nineteen ten First Street in Highland Park.
Thank you very much, Chairman Sanchez. I believe, um, Mr. Wallen has testified many, many times before the CBA. And I'm hoping you'll recognize him as an expert witness.
Indeed, he has, and the board recognizes his, his expertise.
Thank you so much. Okay, Michael, is it true that you executed the affidavit that is included with the findings of fact?
It is true, yes.
Thank you. And is it also true that you prepared the expert report, um, submitted with the findings of fact and attached to your affidavit?
I did.
Thank you so much. Is it also true that, um, the credentials, uh, included at the back end of the, um, report? Are, are also accurate and complete?
They are accurate and complete.
And are you familiar with the subject property and the proposed operations and the surrounding neighborhood?
I am. I visited the site three times as early as September, as recently as about three weeks ago.
And have you considered whether or not the proposed dispensary would meet the standards in the city of Chicago zoning ordinance? For the approval of the requested special use?
To the best of my knowledge, I do believe they meet each of them. The, the applicable standards, the five hundred foot distance. Without a school, there is none. That's based on Google Maps, that's based on Walk Score. It's in the interest of the convenience, public convenience. It'll fit in well with this area. It's a desirable location. It's in the interest of the public. I do believe from what I've read that CAP will have a detailed security plan and will not allow any onsite consumption. Finally, I do believe it meets all the standards as set forth in the cannabis and city Chicago zoning ordinance.
And did you also come to the conclusion that? When and if the proposed dispensary is approved and operating in the manner described in the application? That it would not have any adverse effects on residential or commercial neighbors?
I believe that is true on page. Uh, well, concerning the hours of operation nearby users, commercial operations, the hours of cannabis dispensaries, lack of schools. The market studies identified my report and finally my MRAD data. It's my opinion. That I do not believe that it'll have an impact on surrounding properties.
And directing your attention to page eighteen of your report, and specifically the, the fifth. Criteria for approval, um, you wrote, this dispensary will promote pedestrian safety and comfort with. Facade repairs. New lighting, new security cameras, staff discouragement of loitering. And interior accommodation of customer demand to avoid sidewalk queuing via both room. And fixture design as well as operational practices such as online ordering.
I do, I still believe in that and as identified by Ms. Moore this just now, between the texting, the online, I still believe that's the case.
Great. Thank you very much, um, Chairman Sanchez. Uh, I, I think that's what, uh, highlights we were going to hit. And we would love to take any and all questions that you have.
Any questions from the board? And I guess I'll just, uh, ask it one more time, just to clarify. Uh, your, um, the applicant is, is okay with, with, um. Adhering to DPD's recommendation, uh, that there be no customer queuing outside of the building, correct?
Yes, we are.
That's correct.
Okay, okay. Okay, uh, we will, um, take this matter under advisement. Uh, I want to thank everyone for their time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman.
Right, next up, um. One second. Okay, we are, um, going to go back. Uh, and, uh, call a case that we passed over earlier in the day. And that is calendar number. One thirty-seven dash twenty-three dash S. This is thirty-four fifty-five to fifty-nine South Ashland. If you are here in objection or support of this matter, please raise your hand and we will get you promoted. You're on your phone. It's star nine to raise your hand and, uh, star six to unmute.
One second. Um, Mr. Chair, uh, Chairman Sanchez, I think that we need to be passed, um, for, uh. Another, another, um. Few minutes, uh, we're still working with Alderman Lee.
Okay, okay, all right, um. We will, uh, we'll pass it again and, uh, and we'll come back, um.
Patience and accommodation.
Absolutely, maybe, um, maybe just, you know, raise your hand, uh, when you're, when you're ready.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so, um. So we're not going to do one thirty-seven right now. We are going to go. Onto the continued cases. And first up is, uh, thirty-eight. Dash twenty-three dash S. This is six seventeen West Forty-third Street. If you're here in objection or support of this matter. Please raise your hand and we will get you promoted. It's, uh, if you're on the phone, it's star nine to raise your hand, star six to unmute.
Hello?
Hi, how are you?
Hi, how are you?
I'm good, I'm good. Uh, could, could you state your name and address, please?
Shaniqua Hall, address is twenty-nine, I mean forty-nine, twenty-four South King Drive. Okay.
Go, go, yeah, go ahead, finish with the zip.
Chicago, Illinois, six oh, six, one, five.
Okay, and do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. And, uh, Kareem, uh, Musawir, uh, is your expert, correct?
Yes.
And he has, uh, already been sworn in today and his expertise has been recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Kareem.
Thank you. Uh, okay, uh, Ms. Hall, uh, I'm not seeing any objectors. Um. Tell us what brings you here today. Oh, 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 oh. Hold up, Nancy's.
Um, Mr. Chairman, you need to read the recommendation.
Thank you. Let me read the department's recommendation. This is the, uh. Recommendation for calendar number thirty-eight dash twenty-three dash S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed hair salon. Okay, so, uh, you're here because you want to open up a hair salon, correct?
Yes.
And, um, can you tell us about, uh, your experience in the, uh, industry?
Well, I want to say good evening now, no longer morning time. So the chairman and the members on the board. I'm sorry, I'm nervous, a little bit, uh. So my name is Shaniqua Hall. I already told you all my address. I'm the owner and operator of Nico's Place located at six seventeen West Forty-third Street. I'm trying to open up a beauty salon in the new city community. I'm seeking for approval for this special use permit. In order to allow a hair salon that is located within a thousand feet of an existing personal use. Located in a B three, one, community shopping district, which. Has two nail salons located at seven thirty-six and seven eleven West Forty-third Street. We have no intention of operating nail services. With me today is Mr. Kareem. He is my land, land use consultant.
Okay, uh, let me, hold on, let me, let me just stop you, uh, for one second because, uh. We do, somebody, we do have someone else that joined and I'm, I need to find out if he's here in objection. Steve, uh. Steve Demitro, are you here on this matter? Oh, you're muted right now.
Hi, I, I'm here on the cannabis dispensary, so I, I signed and signed off.
Oh, okay, okay.
But I, but I will be a participant on the cannabis dispensary. I think you just passed that over.
Yes, we did, we did, and, uh, we're not sure exactly when it's going to be recalled.
Okay, I'll hang on, thank you.
Okay. Um, okay, all right, uh, you can go ahead, uh, Ms. Hall. I just needed to make sure, uh, you know, find out if he was an objector on this matter or not. He's not an objector for this matter. You have no. Proceed.
Okay, um, so with me today is Mr. Kareem. He is my land use consultant. As a young teenager, I started doing care of my family members and close friends. And I also manage, like, when I'm, as an adult, of course, about three or four, for three or four years. I managed a salon called Blamzon Boutique and Salon located at fiftieth and St. Street. I have since become a life path apologist for the last two or three years. And I, and for the first time I see myself possibly achieving my long life goal of owning my own hair salon. My proposed hair salon is nine hundred square feet, a commercial space located on the first floor. Of an existing two-story brick missus building with the residential use on the second floor. I propose to establish a six-chair hair salon with each station separated by wall proportions. I also propose to sell my personal branding here and personal care products. My proposed days and hours of operations will be compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. However, my clients will be serviced primarily by a horn. This includes my testimony and should the chairman or the members of the board have any questions for me, my zoning consultant, Mr. Kareem and I. Are available to answer them. I sincerely thank the zoning staff for your patience and assistance, and I think this board, I thank this board for allowing me.
Uh, Kareem, uh, do you want to, uh, testify in this matter?
Uh, yes, sir.
Okay, go ahead.
So this, uh, is a small, the applicant is, uh, required to. Uh, meet the five standards that is proposed. The proposed special use complies with all applicable standards of the city of Chicago. It's located in a B three dash one district. Were not for the fact of the other two uses within the thousand feet, it would be permitted. Those two uses are nail salons and this, uh. Uh, applicant is proposing to not have nail salon services. That, that, and number two, the proposed special use in the interest of the.
Oh, hold up, hold up. I got her. Um, ho- hold on, Kareem, another person just joined, um, Bill, if you can unmute.
Thank you.
Bill, are you, uh, are you here in objection or support of this matter?
Um, well, I'm down defense right now. I'm a neighbor and we met with, uh. Shaniqua and her team and, um, we talked about hours and she did not commit. Just a few minutes ago to what her hours would be when she did to us, uh, the other night. So I just want to. Get that out in the open of what the actual hours of the salon are going to be.
Okay, all right, well, let's, um, uh, let's, let's go to that, uh. Shaniqua, can you tell us what are the hours of operation? Oh, and also let me, um, let me, let me, uh, before we, before you answer that question, um. Bill, if you could, uh, state your name and address, please.
Sure, William, Bill Ensworth, six ten West Forty-third Street, Chicago, Illinois, six oh, six, oh, nine.
Could you spell your last name, please?
E N S W O R T H.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. Okay, uh, Ms. Hall, so the question is, what are, uh, your hours of operation going to be? Uh, please let us know.
The hours of operation will be Monday through Friday, nine to seven PM, nine AM to seven PM. Saturdays, nine AM to six PM and. Appointments will be available upon request for Sundays and Mondays, but we do, we will close early on those days, about four or five.
Okay, okay. Um, okay, thank you, uh. Uh, Kareem, did you want to finish your testimony and then we'll, we'll go back to Bill and see if he has any other questions after that?
Sure.
Can I add something to, uh, regarding to the, the. I did meet with the Alderman and the people in the community. So I just wanted to add that, that I did speak with the, uh. Answer any questions that they will have about my business.
Shaniqua, I, um, I was at that meeting, that's why I asked the hours, because I know it was discussed at the meeting on. Monday and I just wanted to clarify, uh, you didn't really pin down what the hours were. And that's what I wanted to do and I, I guess, but when you get back to me, I have, do have another question.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, well, let's, uh, let's go to Kareem for the, for the time being, so he can finish his testimony and then, uh, we'll go back to Bill.
The, uh, second standard is that the proposed special use is in the interest of the public convenience. And will not have a significant adverse impact on the general work and neighborhood and community. Uh, the, the applicant has indicated that she has an established clientele. And that, uh, she is not expecting to have any impact on the other businesses in the community. And then with the arrangement with the community in terms of hours and, uh, operational. Issues that it will be in the public, is, in, in the public convenience. Uh, uh, um, or it would be in the interest of the public convenience in that, in that respect. As a proposed special use is compatible with the character of the surrounding area in terms of site planning and building scale and project design because. Subject is located in the existing buil- uh, store and apartment building. Where, and in this neighborhood, there are a number of other small family businesses such as Shaniqua's proposes to operate. And so it is not unlike those businesses. Uh, the proposed special use is incompatible, is, is compatible. The proposed special use is compatible, but the character of the surrounding area in terms of operating characteristics, such as hours of operation, outdoor lighting, noise, and traffic generation, because the hours that has been stated are compatible with the hours of the other local businesses, there's a restaurant there, a pizza, a pizza parlor there, a cafe. I'm sure the caller on the other line would also indicate any other issues that are already in operation there. The proposed special use is designed to promote pedestrian safety and comfort, and it is so designed, recently built, and you can see that it has fencing and, and windows upon the public way. I believe that these standards are met by this use, and that will conclude my testimony. I have filed findings of fact that would be, which I would testify to this, in the bit that I had to, to substantially substantiate those findings.
Okay. All right, let's go back to Bill. Bill, did you have any other questions or comments?
I just want to confirm that, how many employees or would they be independent contractors?
Shaniqua?
Yes, there'll be, there'll be six other independent contractors.
Are those already hired or people that you would hire, Shaniqua?
I have four already hired, and I have two seats available for, for people of different, you know, just, I just want to have two open seats for anybody who's looking for a salon at home.
Okay, and I just want to confirm your volume of people at any one time with these other businesses is a little tough with parking, and that is the concern of the immediate area. So I just want to clear the floor with that.
How we would keep the parking clear, for the most part, we're going by appointments only. So once one person comes in and the next one leaves out, it's just the in and out type of process. So I don't think the volume will be a problem at all.
Okay, I guess that's all I got. Thank you, everyone, for your time.
Bill, before you go, Bill, having, having heard Ms. Hall's answers, do you, do you have an objection to her salon?
I'd have to speak with the rest of the neighbors. I just am kind of the representative out here to get some more clarity, but if the Alderman is good, I guess we're going to go off of your guys' recommendation. You guys will look at it and let us know.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Any questions from the board before we take this under advisement? All right, we will take this matter under advisement. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. You all have a great day.
Thank you, everybody.
Chairman, this is the court, but we have a quick back and break.
Yes, let's, I move that we recess until 7:40. Commissioner Toya seconds. Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yes, we're in recess until 7:40.